The February 20th, 2018 meeting. February 20th, 2018 meeting in the City Council of the City of Springfield is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Senor.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Chair would like to recognize the Mayor Jerome, Village President, Mike Loespez, for being here with us. We appreciate your support.
You got $11 million.
Thank you.
Want to sound professional, do it. Got $11 million.
You came to the right meeting. The first item on our, and only item on our zoning agenda is document number 2017-048 for the property located at 1956 East Cook Street in Ward 2. Petitioner is Hassan H. Hussein. Present zoning classification R2, single-family and duplex residence district, section 155.017. Requested zoning relief reclassification to B1 Highway Business Service District, section 155.033, and a variance of section 155.068, garages or accessory buildings or structures, and section 155.480I landscaping screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement in landscaping and a variation of section 155.063, required yards for lots adjoining residential districts to keep the existing garage, which is located on the southeast property line, and creating an approximate zero-foot side yard setback instead of a seven feet, six inches required and approximately zero-foot yard setback instead of the 25-foot required. Also putting this in a required 10-foot transitional buffer yard along the south property line alleyway, and a variance to allow a west property line side yard setback for the principal building of 10 feet instead of 20 feet required, and a south property line yard setback for the principal building of 10 feet instead of the 25 feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial of the requested B1 zoning as the garage is considered nonconforming. The requested variances are not needed since the B1 zoning is recommended for denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is denied that petition as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a recommendation, a motion that we accept the denial recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Been moved and second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of denial. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the motion passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. And then the next item that was supposed to be on the agenda is document number 2018-003 for the property located at 7100 and 7200 Woodland Trail in Ward 1. It's my understanding that's been withdrawn?
Yes, sir, Mayor. That has been withdrawn, but I'd like to recognize homeowners association is here tonight, and they were here to oppose this thing in opposition. We had a petition of over, close to 400 people who opposed this. We're hoping now that this, that this has been rejected, that this has been withdrawn, that we move forward to the cleanup of the property and possibly revoking the lease of that individual, so we can get that cleaned up. Thank you very much.
I don't know, Corporation Counsel, you want to speak to the cleanup, but I think it would go with the lease, lease or?
Yeah, the technical, the current status of it is that the lease is in technical default. The payments have been made, the rent payments have been made, but the condition of the property, the underlying mortgage holder has advised the city that they would, if the contract purchaser does not proceed, that, and the current leaseholder does not proceed, then the bank would actually step in and clean up the property.
And just clarification, Corporation Counsel, that the petitioner for the change would have to go through the complete process all over again because, since they withdrew the petition. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, believe me, we are going to oppose this again if they come back, and we're going to do everything we can to keep that kind of property off of Lake Springfield.
Any other discussion on that? Thank you very much. And that concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. Thank you. Thank you to the residents made it out on this rainy day.
We like the rain. You have to see the lake.
That's right. At this point in time, the Chair recognizes Treasure Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of January had a beginning balance of $3,671,364. We took in total receipts of $6,752,955. Our disbursements in the corporate fund for the month of January were $7,462,912, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of January of $2,961,407. That concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept the financial report?
Go move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the February 6th, 2018 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote, or say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
Go move. Go ahead, sir.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain, or next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda for passage, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes 9 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers 2015-121, 2017-103, 2017-266, 2017-435, 2017-436, 2017-467, 2017-470, 2017-475, 2017-489, 2017-532, 2017-533, 2018-005, and 2018-029 remain tabled or in committee. Next item on the agenda is number 2018-038, an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing the execution of contract UE 1812-63, line clearance services for a two-year term for the Electric Division with Nelson Tree Service LLC, and an amount not to exceed $6 million for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2018-038 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes, go ahead.
I had some, I had a couple of phone calls questioning with the bid process. Now, this is, this is placed out for bid, and only companies that are qualified are able to bid on it. Now, we have some additional language with the city contracts where we're looking for, obviously, we give the, you know, bidders preference to people who are local, and we, now, is there anything involved with the bid process on this that requires the apprenticeship or the minority or the female hires? Is there anything on that bid process that requires?
Project labor agreement?
For the local labor ordinance? I guess, I don't know if Sandy's here, or someone from CWLP. I imagine, Corporation Counsel, they'd have to adhere to the local labor ordinance. Is that correct?
Yeah, the normal EEOC-type requirements are required. This is not a project labor agreement situation because this is an actual direct contract with the city, you know, bid contract that's signed. Our boilerplate requires EEOC compliance and so on.
Okay, so they are supposed to comply with, with those?
Yes.
I think he's referring to the local labor, local labor ordinance.
Several technical requirements they have to have too. Is that correct?
True, they need to be trained on line clearance procedures, but their IBW, they've gone through the IBW apprenticeship program for line clearance.
Kind of piggybacking, kind of piggybacking what Alderman Tylin brought up, is there anyone that goes out and checks that these people coming in from other places and working in our city and taking our money, are they meeting the requirements that are set forth in the
We follow all the procedures that we are required to follow as far as the contractor.
I, I understand that, but does anyone go out and actually check these people that are working and doing the work?
I mean, we, we have a supervisor that are working, that's worked with them every day, yes.
Do they report back on, on what the crews look like and if they're doing the proper work that they're supposed to be doing?
Yes.
And do you know how many are local? I think that's what the question Alderman Tylin's getting at, is our local labor ordinance.
There's a few parts to it. First, the, the local aspect. The second part is whether or not they're meeting the, the minority and female attempt, you know, to have diversification of the workforce, whether or not that's happening. I, like I said, I received two different phone calls questioning whether or not Nelson's is even trying to, or if they had to comply with it. So that's the reason why I brought it up.
So, Corporation Counsel, on the local labor ordinance that we passed with capital projects with this, does this, that's if you speak to that on this ordinance?
It should be incorporated in our boilerplate. However, if they're using their own employees, that's, that's where the, there's a little bit of a, if you will, a, I don't know how they're, if they're bringing people that are their own employees in, or they're actually recruiting their crews. I don't know how they're doing that.
I believe they're, they're own employees.
Okay. They're going to have to comply with all aspects of our purchasing requirement, meaning EEOC, local labor, and so on, and they would have to, there are certain certificates that they have to file to show that they've complied with, like, hiring, you know, if they're seeking employees, things of that nature, that they have to do.
So they have to submit a certified payroll?
I don't know how they're charging. I don't know how they're invoicing. It's not a normal construction project.
It's not a T&amp;M project.
I'm sorry?
It's not a T&amp;M, time and material project.
So their invoice is going to show time and materials, in other words, time spent, hours, et cetera.
It's not a T&amp;M, I said.
I'm saying, okay, it's a flat rate?
Yes.
Okay.
How soon is this, do we have a contract in place now?
We currently do, and it will expire here next month. I mean, we don't have much time, no.
Okay. Alderman McMiniman?
Follow-up on these questions. One was the start date of the contract. Do we know the exact start date of the contract? I didn't see it in the materials that the Alderman received.
Off the top of my head, I do not.
We need to find that out. Secondly, as I understand, Nelson uses seven crews, is that right, John? When they're out doing the tree trimming work, seven crews?
I believe it's seven crews, yeah. About 17 employees.
17 employees. And they're spread among seven crews, so there's two or three per crew.
Yeah, they have some crews that are three-man crews and some that are two, based on the type of equipment they're using.
You know, we have a, a policy within the city to promote residency and employees that are residents. Over 20 of our unions have agreed to that residency idea, and this is a private employer with quite a large number of employees. Is, is there a representative from Nelson here tonight?
Not that I know of. But I, I do know some of their employees do work or do live in the city, and the contract shall begin March 1st, 2018.
Well, in addition to the project labor agreement-type questions that we're raising tonight, I think it'd be helpful to know how many of the Nelson employees reside within our city boundaries. And if there's a possibility we could delay this vote till we get more information, that might be useful, Mr. Mayor.
I, I don't recommend that, just because we are running out of time on this contract, and it is, you know, they are working around, year-round on tree trimming. It's not something that we can delay in order to stay on our, our course. And if there's storms that come through the first week of March, then we don't have any tree trimmers to go out there and do that work for us. So it is a concern for us.
Well, this has come up before during the last three years where we have a very significant contract. This is a $6 million contract spanning two years, and we really, as a council, need to see these so there's time to properly discuss them, and so we're not left with a, a contract to be approved at the last minute. We got to get these to us sooner, John.
We followed the bid process, so.
Just to follow through on the, on your comment, I mean, this is a competitive bid process, so they do have the local bidder preference as far as, you know, if the, if the company's in town, and we don't really govern contracts that require a certain number of people that live within the city limits necessarily, but, so, you know, there are things that we've done, and it's trying, like we said the last, last time, is that, you know, we've looked at trying to base bid projects, make them smaller-sized to try to attract more bidders. It's been unsuccessful. So the utility has taken steps in the last two years to try to attempt to improve the current contract to, to make it more, you know, attractive for other bidders, but there's just, there's just no one really locally that wants to bid on it for that type of work.
Alderman Redpath?
I respectfully disagree with you, Alderman, about delaying this contract, but we're coming into the storm season right now with the trees, and I do think you're, you have a valid point that we should be looking at this kind of stuff, and if they're not in compliance, we can still come back and change stuff. Is that correct, Corporation Counsel?
Yes.
So I don't think it's important, I think it's very important we get this thing rolling so we don't run into a season where we got tree limbs all over the place in the middle of our spring storms coming up. But follow up with this, John, and make sure that we're, that we are in compliance, and obviously, we can't change the contract now that if they, if they're following the requirements of the contract, we can't change that now unless we renegotiate the contract. So is that correct, Corporation Counsel?
Well, the, the bid, a bid contains the terms of the contract. So the bid document is actually forms the contract, and that would have the various requirements regarding EEOC, pay, performance, et cetera, would be in the actual bid documents that they would have to comply with and becomes part of the contract.
So basically, if they're in compliance with what they're, they signed in the contract, there's not a lot we can do other than look at the next contract coming forward. Is that correct?
Well, the, I think that what we'll find out is if we look at the actual bid documents, they're probably pretty substantial, and, but we, if we accept the bid, if the City Council accepted, accepts the bid, then we are also bound by the contract, as are they.
And what's the term of the contract, Director?
Two years.
Two years? Is there such a thing that we can shorten the contract to one year and then come back and do it again, or is that, was that interfere with the price of the contract, of the bid?
We'd have to look closer at the contract if that was the case.
I mean, yeah, there was bid for a two-year period.
So that, that reflects the price they gave us based on the years, correct?
Correct. That would be a substantial change. Or material changes.
DeSensio?
I respect Alderman McMiniman's effort to want to employ Springfield people and Springfield residents, but unless that, and I think we always try to accept local bidders wherever possible, but unless that's built into the contract, I don't think we should go back and say, you know, they all have to live in Springfield. I think that's everyone's preference. We want our residents to work, but I think that needs to be added or considered earlier in the process.
And we'll get a list from Nelson's if it is passed on. Alderman McMiniman?
I think the main point is here is that a City Council always has the authority to reject a contract, and the timing of this situation precludes in many ways the opportunity for the City Council to reject the contract because we want to see some improvements in the contract. So that's the main problem here. As far as the fact that it's about to expire, usually, as we did with the NAPA contract, we had a temporary extension of the NAPA contract because it was something that had to be rebid, and we were trying to obtain coverage during the rebidding process. I don't know if we've got any language in our existing contract with Nelson's to allow us to extend it for a period of time. I think the council would like to know more about the composition of the workforce of Nelson's, and in the future, allow the City Council to provide some incentives to achieve the kinds of workforce that we're trying to obtain for the City of Springfield.
Do you know, Doug, or John, if the, the contract in place now allows for an extension of a month or something?
I do not believe it does, but I'd have to verify that. I don't know.
If it did, if it did have an extension built in, we probably would have came with an extension instead of a new contract, so I tend to doubt it, but.
The existing, at least some of the bid pages that were in the ordinance pack, for the existing contract, there's no extension from I can tell, so I would imagine that the existing contract's the same way.
Mayor?
Alderman Tylin?
They were the only bidder, correct?
Correct.
So I think the best, most, the best course of action here is to pass this, but follow up to make sure that they're complying with the PLA and that things are going the way they're supposed to go, and encourage them to, to follow the rules that we're asking for.
Well, and we'll also check into the possibility with Corporation Counsel on, let's see if there's any kind of requirements that we can add in the future, like maybe local labor or something as well.
Yeah. You could probably, you know, it would have to be listed in the bid.
It just, it depends, it's, I mean, it's, they got to be trained and, so.
They have to meet the qualifications because of the technical aspect of the job, but at this point right now, it's not like we have another bidder out there. But I do think that we do need to have oversight, and we need to have some, some accounting for what we're, what we're getting.
Very good. Alderman Turner?
I think I heard you say that there is a supervisor that goes out and kind of checks the crews and their work and that. I would ask that you speak with the supervisor the last, probably the last several months. I've gotten a lot of complaints with the crews that they have been leaving large, large cuttings that don't necessarily go through the chipper and that, that they've been leaving them and have not, don't come back and get them, and people don't, don't even, don't know that they're coming into their yards to do that, and, you know, they just wake up the next morning or come home from work and they're there. I specifically had calls this week. They were doing some work in the 1900 and 2000 blocks of East Capitol.
Yeah, we have discussed with them that in the past, we've had some issues where it has not been picked up, so we can revisit that with them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2018-050, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid, responsible bid and authorization executing contract number PW 1812-62 with Harold O'Shea Builders for Jackson Street Corridor improvements for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2018-050 on final passage.
Go move. Second.
Been moved and second. Chair will entertain a motion to amend agenda number 2018-050 to change the funding source. And that was a third coming from the TIF, and the remainder coming from Fund 095 Infrastructure.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved and second. Any discussion? Alderman Senor?
Yeah, could you explain how that's going to work?
The TIF fund, a third of the project cost would come from TIF funds that reimburse Fund 95 over a five-year period of time. That way, it helps relieve the stress on the TIF fund, so for other projects that may come forward. Alderman Proctor?
Just make a request that if you're using TIF, to have it go before the EDC for recommendation.
Well, that will delay the project. Corporation Counsel, do you want to speak to that?
The role of the EDC is really advisory. In the format of this, where there's an amendment at the City Council level, I don't think the amendment has to be reviewed. It's up to the city, up to the prerogative of the City Council to adopt it or reject it.
And what we could do is if you, so choose, if the council so chooses, we prefer that the ordinance goes forward so it doesn't slow down the work, and if for some reason the EDC declines to move the TIF funds forward, then we come back to this body to make a ruling at that point if someone wants to second the motion made by Alderman Proctor. Is there a second?
Second for what?
Take it to the EDC?
Well, is the, I ask just, is the, is the motion to defer this matter to the EDC? Or?
If, if you want to pass it so you can get the work, I understand you have a deadline. I think the mayor's approach is fine. If you, maybe we subdivide it, I don't know how you want to do it, but if you could send the, what, the 831,067 portion to EDC for TIF, to the EDC, and then have them recommend or deny, and then if they deny, come back for supplemental, kind of like what we did with the Fire Department EVP program, I guess.
Alderman Redpath?
I'm going to call for a roll call vote, please.
I have a question first.
Alderman DeSensio?
Is there adequate money in the TIF right now to fund this?
I guess Valiezal or John to come forward?
I'm just shaking my head.
At the end of this year, we will be in a negative of $690,000 at the end of this year.
Okay.
And so this will go into next year, and next year with all of our obligations will be $6 million, negative, six million.
Okay, so there isn't money in the TIF to fund this?
No, not.
Unless it's spread out over a period of time.
Right. The five years was going to be a better option, yes, being spread out over five years.
That's the point I was trying to bring up. We're not going to fund it all at one time. We're going to take a loan and fund it partially each year.
Pay back the, pay back the fund, yes.
Yes.
Over a five-year period.
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
Mr. Mayor, I think this is a better funding arrangement than what we originally began with, because originally it was going to be 100% out of the infrastructure, and now it's a sharing, two funds are sharing in the cost of the, of this $2.6 million roughly improvement for one block between the Governor's Mansion and the Y Block. But since last week, I've received a number of phone calls about this from individuals that are concerned about the level of spending on this project. In particular, not so much the below-ground spending for the water retention, and we received a pretty good briefing on that some time ago, maybe four, five months ago. But for the above-ground, we're talking about spending roughly $900,000 based on the information we had received last week for basically streetscape and landscaping. And there's concern that, number one, folks haven't seen what that landscaping or streetscape looks like. I asked the Downtown Springfield, Inc. folks if they've seen it, and they said, no, they haven't seen it. This council hasn't seen it. I know we're trying to do something for the bicentennial, although we've already got the realtors doing something significant for the bicentennial in front of their property just a half a block away, but I'm concerned about the level of spending here without any oversight of what it's going to look like, and furthermore, I'm not sure we want to spend that amount of money for a streetscape before we even know what's going to be on the Y WCA block. So it just seems like we're not lining things up properly. And I've even had a comment that, quote, "It's great to put together a lot of funding and spending in front of the Governor's Mansion, but some folks aren't too excited about celebrating in front of the Governor's Mansion after we've had basically, for one reason or another, four troublesome governors in a row." So that's my concern about that, and so if we have to vote on this tonight, I'm going to be a no vote because we don't know how the $1 million is going to be spent for the street scape, and we're really taking money away that could go to our neighborhoods. That's the other part about this.
I'd like Director Mahoney to come forward, but keep in mind, this is the Jackson Street Corridor, it's not the Governor's Mansion Corridor, and so it's really linking up Lincoln's Home all the way to the tracks or to the Capitol. And so if you go to other communities, what you see is that walkable pathway, so this is just a continuation of the Bicentennial Plaza, which connects Lincoln's Home all the way to that area. So Director Mahoney, if you'd like to make comments?
Sure. Yeah, the mayor's exactly right. This is kind of continuation of what's being done on the private side on the Capitol Plaza, the realtors are doing, and what's going on with the Governor's Mansion. We've done some paring back, that the majority of it, as you pointed out, is really the, dealing with the flooding issue. A lot of, the majority of the project is, it's probably about $800,000 we're talking about for the streetscape portion. So, and it's, it's work, it needs to be done. The curve's busted up down there, but we presumed at this, this location, it should be done at a level that fits in with the surrounding area. And plus, what we're doing there will fit with whatever goes on with the Y Block, because we're really talking about the streetscape and then some of that detention underground on, really closer to the, for Jackson Street.[1791.33] detention underground on, really closer to the, for Jackson Street. So whatever happens on the Y Block should coordinate well with what we're doing.
And I would imagine a large portion of it's the ornamental lighting that we have. I think that's probably a large portion of the cost. Or is that?
There's work that has to be done. Yeah, quite a bit of it's lighting, but there's a variety of things. The streetscape, the pavers, the.
It's similar to what you see on Capitol. You have that continuation.
Yes.
Alderman Señor?
Director, is this in preparation for after you complete the underground work and then when you come back, you're gonna do the above-ground work? Is that what this money's going for?
It's gonna, we're trying to push for that deadline hitting July 1st, which coordinates with what they're trying to do at the mansion, the bicentennial celebration. So we're gonna try to do it, coordinate it all together. So once we get approval, we'll move forward as soon as we can, move forward with the underground work. The idea is to have everything completed before July 1st.
And again, that's to just to tie everything in, what the realtors are doing and what the Governor's Mansion, Governor's people are doing.
Exactly. Their goal is to complete their project by that date as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep. Alderman Proctor?
I just wanna say I'm not opposed to the project. I think the project needs to happen, but just the precedent of spending TIF without having it go to the EDC again. I don't think we've done that yet. I think everything that we've been, TIF allocated has gone to the EDC, recommendation or whatever. But I think it's a good project, needs to happen, but just need that portion to go to EDC.
And as a reminder, I wanted 100% to come from the infrastructure fund. Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, my concern, after we do this, whatever's coming on the Y Block, this is on the south side of the Y Block, correct?
Right.
Okay. Are we gonna make sure that the construction trucks don't come up on the pavers and all that? Are we gonna, I mean, it doesn't make sense to do this and then have the construction companies come through and wreck what, you know, the $2 million worth of work that's sitting there. I just.
If we'd have the engineer from Crawford Murphy and Tilly come forward and explain the process of the project and their work.
Because it's not this project so much as the what's going on after. We're kinda, I'd rather have a crappy road that's, you go, we can drive, drive over and then fix that after the, after the construction.
Alderman, typically any, if there's any damage from a construction project, they would have to cover it. They'd pay for it. They'd make the repairs if there was damage to that at that point. But what our efforts would be to make sure that didn't occur. So coordinate it as best we can.
There should not be, I mean, the Y Block, there's plenty of other access points around the Y Block. They should not have to use this street at all for access for construction. And we've also got the sewers, you know, it's on the South Third. So they should, and that's all park type stuff in any plan you've looked at. So there shouldn't be any impact. We've coordinated it with the mayor and some of the folks he's been talking to and we shouldn't have any issues with construction.
I would like to point out that EDC did approve the engineering funding. We went and did a presentation to them a few months back, several months ago at this point, and they were very supportive of the, of the project. So I presume they would approve the funding, but.
Alderman Proctor?
Was there any talk of TIF at that point? Or was just, so we, yeah, I do remember that meeting because I was there.
Yeah.
I remember. Did they talk about TIF money being spent for it though?
Well, there was TIF money spent for the engineering design of it, so at that time.
Remember how much?
Couple hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, okay.
So I guess the motion is to amend the amendment, to send it, the amended portion to the EDC, but move forward with the project using infrastructure funds. I'll call for roll call. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Clarification, sir, are we voting all the money from infrastructure pending, money being spent by?
May I?
Yes.
Try to help here. If you would like to make a motion to defer the amendment for action, you may properly adopt the entire ordinance, then we'd bring a follow-on ordinance to amend it, adding the TIF funding. If, in other words, as a follow-on ordinance, if that's what you would like to do. If you wanna defer the funding portion of the TIF to EDC, then it would come back as an ordinance amending this one if it passes.
Otherwise, it's all spent out of infrastructure if approved by the council tonight?
Yes, sir. If the amendment is not adopted or deferred.
Is that?
Spell that out again, I'm sorry.
If, if you have a roll call on your motion to defer the amendment referencing the TIF money, the 800.
Thirty-one thousand.
Eight hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
Approximately.
To EDC, that motion passes, then action is taken on the ordinance as originally presented without the amendment. Then if that passes, it would be all infrastructure. But if EDC recommends the 831,000, we could do a follow-on ordinance amending this to then add that component.
Okay.
Point of, point of order. Should we then be voting on the amendment to add the TIF funding first and then vote as to whether or not to defer the amendment?
If you, the first point of action I think would be to vote on whether you wish to defer it. If you don't defer it, then you would vote on the amendment.
Okay. Alderman Hanauer?
The only concern that I have with that is, I mean, I, the TIF is, I will vote for it if we have the TIF attached, but if we don't, I'm a no vote on that. I think that, I think that it's, and that's my concern about doing it that way.
Alderman McMiniman?
I agree with what Alderman Hanauer just stated because if we allow the Economic Development Commission to vote on the TIF funding, they'll never vote for it. They'll vote no because they wanna preserve the TIF money for other projects. So I agree with what you're stating, Ralph.
We got a coalition now, Joe. Is that what some people are gonna start talking?
So the vote is to defer the TIF portion to the EDC?
Presently, Alderman Proctor has made a motion to defer the amendment to the EDC. I believe it was seconded. Was it seconded?
Well, there was no second.
I don't think so.
There was no second.
Okay. Then if, if there would have to be a second, there would be a second. And then I think Alderman Redpath had asked for a roll call on that motion to defer.
Correct. Any other discussion to defer the amendment? Okay, roll call vote. Alderman Redpath?
No.
Alderman Señor?
No.
Alderman Turner?
No.
Alderman Fulgency?
No.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
No.
Alderman Thailand?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Alderman Hanauer?
No.
Eight no's and two yeses. So the chair will entertain a motion to amend the agenda number 2018-050 using a third TIF funding.
To adopt the amendment as proposed, which is an amendment number one.
And that's already been moved and seconded, I believe.
Yep. So the vote would be appropriate on the original motion to adopt the amendment.
Is there a motion to accept the amendment?
Go move. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to pass the ordinance as amended. Any discussion? It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Just briefly, I'm a no vote because I think we needed more oversight and review of what's being done for the $1 million of spending on the streetscape, which we haven't received.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance as amended, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. The ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no.
Mayor, I make a motion to reconsider 2017-558.
Five fifty-eight?
Yes.
What does it pertain to? Excuse me?
It's regarding the sales tax that was defeated last council meeting.
And just briefly, procedurally, the city council in its next meeting, which the next regularly scheduled meeting, is allowed to reconsider an ordinance that was either defeated or adopted by a motion by the prevailing party. In this case, the prevailing party would be those who voted in the negative. So if the motion is passed to reconsider, the only thing that means is it's now up for debate. So a vote to reconsider is simply a vote to bring it back and then there would have to be debate and a motion to adopt it or otherwise.
Do you have a copy of that?
I may have to check.
Could it just be a minute while we pull that up?
Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you, sir. And so procedurally, the first step is do you want to reconsider it?
We have a motion and a second.
So if there's.
Who offered the second?
Chair. Been a motion by Alderman Thailand to reconsider and seconded by Alderman Redpath for ordinance number 2017-558, an ordinance amending Article five or six, Chapter 100, Section 100.52 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances, as amended by increasing the local sales tax from 2.25% to 2.50%. It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Point of information, this is just for the reconsideration for the discussion, correct?
Correct. That is correct. The, procedurally, the motion to reconsider should be passed. Therefore, that brings it back to the council as if it was originally before you. Then it's proper to eventually have a vote after debate on whether you would adopt it or reject it or whatever the action of the council.
Do all members vote on that or just the prevailing side?
No, the, all the, the motion must be made by those on the prevailing side, but all members would vote on the motion to reconsider.
Alderman McMiniman?
Request roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Roll call. Any other discussion? Alderman Señor?
What's the purpose? Are we gonna debate?
Discuss.
Okay, discuss. Are we gonna?
No, no final motion has been made other than to just reconsider it for debate purposes.
Let's discuss it.
We gotta vote on the discussion.
Yeah, to reconsider for discussion or then you can move for passage. So roll call vote. Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Señor?
No.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Fulgency?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderman DeSensio?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
No.
Alderman Thailand?
Aye.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Eight yes, two no. So is there a motion on the ordinance?
Motion for discussion at the moment, Mayor.
Motion for discussions, there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to discuss.
The reason I brought it back up is this is the one meeting where, as Mr. Zerco said, we'd have the opportunity to discuss it. Everybody's been going over the budget numbers. Everybody's been turning in their amendments. Everybody's been getting the phone calls, getting stopped at the grocery store, listening to the radio, the TV, reading the newspaper. Everyone's been hearing from the employees, our constituents, our neighbors, our friends, even our husbands and wives. And where we're at is, at the moment, we started out with an $11 million budget hole. We plugged 1.2 million into that with the telecom, which leaves 9.8 million of a projected budget shortfall. Is that correct, Director McCarty?
Did you hear? Can you say that again?
It leaves, we were looking at 11 million when we started this discussion with the budget workshops. We have 1.2 in new revenue that was passed. So we're still looking at approximately 9.8 million in budget shortfall.
With the things that have been done thus far, I believe we're at 6.7.
So there have been some things done by the mayor's office that have reduced it some.
We had, we had the initial cuts and we also had the telecom tax that passed a few weeks ago.
So we're still looking at 6.7.
That's correct.
Does that include amendments that are being proposed tonight?
It does not. That is where we sit currently as we speak.
So if we, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Can I speak?
Yep.
So if we vote, if we vote on the amendments, that'll drop the proposal, drop the number down even further. Is that correct? Director McCarty?
I'm sorry, my staff was talking to me. Could you repeat that?
So with, if we vote on the amendments and pass the amendments on, that will also drop the number down. Can you tell us what the projected number would be after the amendments?
If you give me a minute, I'd have to look at all of them.
Any of them that are decreasing the spending would logically decrease the amount of.
I get that. I just wanna hear the number.
I was not aimed at you, Chuck. I was aimed at the bean counter behind me.
Approximately 3.8 million dollar gap.
And that would require passing all.
The problem is, Alderman, that several of these amendments sort of overlap with one another. So we would be double counting some of them if we just use the overall aggregate number. So it'll be a second for us to calculate that.
And some of these are actually just moving money from one fund to another. So that will not represent a decrease.
But may I, as a reminder, Alderman Hanauer brought that up last week is, you know, when I started out with the budget I presented was taking into account the range was eight and a half million to 11 and a half million. So I went with the eight and a half million based on cuts with the sales tax and the telecom passing going the full year. And as Alderman Hanauer pointed out, well, if that doesn't happen, there's gonna be a bigger gap. The final part of that would be a spend down of fund balance. And so that's why it was important that the council took the appropriate action to pass the policy and enact it, which we appreciate. And that range should be between 8% and I think it's 15% based on that policy. So with that, that's why I'm bringing forward the natural gas tax at the next meeting. And that would be geared towards pension payments. And if the corporate fund cannot make the pension payment on itself, as we all know, property taxes are all being used to fund police and fire pensions. And then additional 600,000 to fund that comes from alternative sources like sales tax. So the natural gas tax, which will be debated at the next city council meeting, would help plug that hole and then relieve the pressure on the corporate fund. And then the subsequent year, if that's passed, would be split between pension fund and equipment. And so you have this dedicated source of revenue, unless it's deemed otherwise by the council, for the pension payments as we move forward in equipment. So that's where we're at with regards to that. So the cuts would, that are the amendments made, you know, that will be, you know, a help for tonight. Two things. One, I ask that we do settle it tonight because it's not fair to the citizens of Springfield, our employees and ourselves to, you know, belabor this any longer. I think it's been discussed quite often and, you know, in the public and in the media. So I think we just need to take action with regards to that and move forward in that direction. But the, even if with the amendments, it's not gonna be enough. There'll have to be additional cuts if the sales tax, the quarter percent, does not move forward. And that's 25 cents on a $100 purchase. So I appreciate the Alderman reconsidering it. Hopefully you reconsider it for approval. Alderman McMiniman?
Mr. Mayor, I understand the logic behind putting the sales tax possibility back on the table, not knowing what cuts we might achieve during the rest of tonight's evening and any special meetings we might create between now and the end of February. It may be helpful to hold this particular ordinance, 2018-050, until we've discussed the potential cut so we know where we're at. And as far as the natural gas tax, Mr. Mayor, I was thinking you were gonna bring that out tonight as an amendment to the appropriations ordinance because it impacts our budget so that it'd be properly linked that way. And hopefully you'd consider doing it either tonight or in a special meeting between now and the end of February so that we can incorporate that potential spending or fundraising amount in the total budget package instead of trying to pass a budget as I think you were just trying to suggest. And then after the budget's passed, then doing a tax increase after that.
I'd be more than happy to bring it out if I have eight votes. So if eight Aldermen are in agreement with that, we'll bring it forward. Otherwise, we'll go the normal route, which would be six votes. And it won't impact the budget because the budget will pass with the codification of the sales tax. And if the sales tax voted down, so be it. Let's move on. There'll be a decision made by the administration to take whatever appropriate action needs to take. But we need to move on. I mean, we've discussed it enough. We were elected to make these difficult choices and that's what we intend to do. It wasn't easy for me to put out the natural gas tax, but I did it because we need to move forward one way or the other so we can, you know, I think we put a lot of people's, hopefully their minds at ease, but it depends on the actions of the council.
Well, Mayor, I think one of the things that, when my constituents have talked with me that had, have come up in the conversations is, a lot of the constituents and the employees, they understand that we've all either, we either work for a living or we've recently retired from a career. It's not like any of us are silver spoons where we inherited money and it's, you know, just coming out of our ears. Every single one of us has a family budget that we've had to deal with. We've had to make choices. I mean, right now at this point, I've got a boy that just grew two inches. I gotta decide whether he gets shoes or pants this month and then carry the rest of it to the next month, just like every one of the rest of you guys have to do with your budgets at home. It's not a simple decision. It's something that we know affects every family in Springfield, but it also would affect every family in Springfield if we don't take the time to consider the action.
No doubt.
You know.
Alderman Señor?
Thank you, Mayor. You're talking about being fair to the citizens of Springfield and the workers and the people that work for the city. But we have a big problem, but we have people that work that don't live in the city. They come in, they get their paycheck and they go home and spend it wherever they wanna spend it. And that never seems to be addressed here. I mean, I know you've addressed some of it with the residency and the unions have been very good to us, but I think that's one of our biggest problems. We have people come in, make a very good salary here in the city of Springfield, and they take their money and go spend it elsewhere. And nobody seems to care about that. But now it's budget time and people don't want us to make hard cuts and we're gonna have to make some hard cuts. And I just think that we need to take all that into consideration. And I just think that we need to take all that into consideration, because looking at the numbers that have been presented to us, is Alderman, you know, that's one of the things that's been digging in my craw, and we need to find a way to address that very situation.
That's why I appreciate the council's support for the residency, and some of the unions have come forward with it, and we appreciate that, and we'll continue to push that direction. Alderman Redpath?
Point of order for Corporation Council, so the procedure that we need to take, if we wanted to consider the amendments now, we're in the discussion phase of the ordinance, do we, can we make the amendments to the, to it now, or we have to wait, and does that have to come in a special?
I think we can move this number to the end of the agenda. We can make a motion to move it to whichever spot after whatever ordinance we want, and then pick up the discussion again.
That's a motion, I'll second the motion.
Hold on, Matt, let's see.
No, I, I was going to say that that, I think succinctly really explains it to council, because this is legislative procedure. You have reconsidered this, so now it's up for discussion. You may defer this to the item, if the thought process is to defer it till after 2018-051, which is the next, next item, then if the council deems that appropriate, that's a legislative matter. Therefore, if that motion is adopted, it would defer this further action till after that discussion takes place.
So, is there a motion and a second on the floor?
Alderman Henauer?
Can we, can we do that, though? Because we'll have to vote, we'll have to vote on the, the next ordinance, which is the budget, correct? Can we do that when we don't know? I mean, would we have to delay that till, bring the other one back and vote on it?
We could, we could, we could defer this, make the motions on the budgets, on the amendments, and then technically, on 2018-051, we could, after we've done the amendments, we could defer it to behind this ordinance again.
Right.
I know, it's kind of crazy, but we can.
Got to do it this way.
I guess I would ask, the reasoning for not taking action now as opposed to waiting, because regardless of the actions, there's still going to be a significant multimillion-dollar gap, so that's what, I just throw that out there for consideration. Alderman Seenor?
So, if we do all that, and we still don't have a balanced budget, then are we defeating the purpose of voting on the appropriation? Because if we, if we vote on it and it's not balanced, then we don't have a full appropriation to fund what we need to have funded.
Will that be up to the administration to move forward with, with the cuts, or with the spend down of fund balance, or Corporation Council, or Director McCarty can speak to that specifically?
Please be very specific, because I'm, I want to make sure I'm, I know what I'm voting on.
Certainly, you could plug any hole with fund balance for the time being and replace it with a subsequent ordinance, such as the sales tax ordinance, if the city council chooses to do so.
And again, that's a item of last resort, so let's play this out. Hopefully, the sales tax passes, the cuts are made, there's still a gap, hopefully, natural gas passes in March. Whatever we get to at the end of this next fiscal year, the intent is to spend down fund balance. And I believe it'll be between the 8% and 15% range that we passed in policy. So, we're within the code in that direction. If not, then we'll have to take some appropriate action. But through this whole course of next fiscal year, we're slowing down hiring. We're going to continue to look at other avenues for cuts, things of that nature, so it's a work in progress. That's what the budget is, as we learned going through this year's fiscal year. So, that's where it's going to be. But the case of last resort would be spending down the fund balance.
Well, I think the point that I was trying to make with putting the amendments is to know exactly what the, the number was for, what we'd have to tap into the fund balance. That's the reason I wanted to push the amendments.
Director McCarty?
Sure. So, the total corporate fund for the amendments is 3.9 million, and there is some overlap and some duplication, but these lines, there are hundreds of lines over 26 pages, so we can't sit here right now and look at where the duplication is. Wouldn't be a large number, but there is some duplication.
So, Director, would that be the, that would, would that be the final gap, 3.9 million?
So, so, let's assume...
Give or take.
As we sit here today, we're looking, before any action, we're looking at roughly a 6.6 to 6.7 million dollar deficit.
But according to your last statement...
Should you pass all of the amendments, you would knock 3.9 off of that, so...
Off of the 6.7?
Yes, so your gap...
That gives, hold up. So, that gives us, that gives us 2.8 million, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, the gap will be 2.8 million, is that correct?
At that point, yes.
Thank you.
And, and so, where we are with the fund balance, Director?
And that's a ballpark.
If we tapped into the fund balance for the remaining 2.8 million, where would that put the fund balance?
Well, assuming we do nothing, that would put us at 6.1%, utilizing 6.6 million of fund balance. If we passed all of that and left a deficit of about 2.8, that would put us somewhere around 9.3, give or take.
But that's only if all the amendments pass.
Yeah.
Well, and like Alderman Turner said, do they all have, is it revenue, or is it moving money from one place to the other? So, that's, have you calculated that, Julie?
Yes. In summary, there are three different components to what's going on. There's the pure reduction of revenue, there is influx of new revenue into the corporate fund, and then there are some one-time reductions. And all those added together equal the 3.9 that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So, do we want to make a motion to move this behind, or do we want to keep going on this now? I'll make the motion to defer 2017...
058.
Zero, 558.
558.
To after 2018-051.
Second.
They moved in second for 2017-558, to consider it after the discussion and action on 2018-051. And it's been second to any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2018-051, annual appropriation ordinance of the city of Springfield, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning March 1st, 2018, and ending February 28th, 2019. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2018-051 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Would you prefer that we hear from the audience first?
I think we might want to do the amendments first, or at least read them, and then if the audience wants to comment on those as well.
The First Amendment reduces, should I say who they're from, or how do you want? So, from...
You might go just in order.
I was just going to do the summary sheet.
If you want to flip through behind it.
Okay.
Everyone should have a written copy of the amendments. I think it has been reduced to kind of a summary by OBM, and so, just for...
Okay.
To make sure there's clarity, they're just numbered 1 through 14, and it should summarize, and then there's, there's a brief summary of the effect of it. So, if we just simply take them in order, then a person can make a motion to adopt or not adopt, and so on, then that might be the easiest way to make the record clear on what, what the action of the council is.
So, the amendment number one, sponsored by Alderman Redpath and Alderman Henauer, represents the removal of funding in an equal amount, equal to the Director of Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So moved.
And the total amount is for $150,132. It's been moved?
I think we just, I think what I was suggesting is that we read all of them in, and then the, the public will have the ability to make comments on not only the budget, but the amendments.
But if we read them all in, some people may not want to vote for certain ones, the ordinances. We need to, if we're going to do them, we probably need to vote on them, so let's get it on.
Move on it right away. That's... Been moved for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman DeSensio?
So, this eliminates the salary for the Director of OPEC?
Correct.
Okay, so there won't be a Director of OPEC?
There'll be a title, there won't be any funding there.
So, how will the Director of OPEC be paid?
We'll have to figure that out later.
I guess, I'd ask Val Yezel to come forward, and I guess for this discussion, because there will be follow-on amendments. Val's working on contract right now, and at a reduced rate, so there's no benefits or anything of that nature. But if you could just give a synopsis of your activities, but one thing I should point out is, Val brings a breadth of knowledge from all aspects. She was President of the Chamber Board, she actually acted as interim Director for the Chamber, and then also being in this role, as well as being a small business owner, so she brings a unique perspective with regards to that. And the one thing, especially in these times, from my own personal viewpoint, is we do not want to slow down any economic development efforts that we have. We can argue about how good they are, or whatever the case may be, but you don't want to slow down the momentum. And Val can speak to her efforts of trying to change the direction and moving in that manner. So, I'll just yield the floor to you. And again, she's paid out a contractual.
Correct.
So, it's not necessarily this line item, but the contractual one, where I notice it's being cut as well significantly, that's one we may want to reconsider.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, Alderman DeSensio.
Is there, is there a, is there an official search underway for a permanent replacement, or is interim Director Yezel...
Yeah, yeah. There was a search, we, I had an advisory group do the interview process, but this point in time, especially being a, basically a year out before the election...
Yes.
I'm not going to bring forward a director's position with everything going on with other discussions, and I just prefer really keeping the momentum going with Val acting as a contractual person. Alderman DeSensio, or, I'm sorry, Alderman Turner?
Tonight is a time to be very blunt and to the point, so my blunt and to the point question is, are these amendments meant to dissolve the Office of Economic Development?
No.
So, they're, so what is the intent?
So, probably what you're going to see in a lot of the amendments is the fact that there's, there's a lot of funded, unfield positions in this budget, and you're going to probably see a lot more of these that are going to come up. This one is unfield, and so, we think it was important to get money wherever we could, so I was taking the funding source out of there, leaving the position in place, because we don't, we cannot abolish, according to Corporation Council, we cannot abolish the position.
So, what, so what is the, I guess, I guess for me, I'm having a, a real problem with the whole way that this smoke and mirrors is happening with this budget process, because we, we want to move money around, we want to, you know, take money from here and there, and make it appear that we're actually doing something. So, if there's a position, and I'm, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, so if there is an Office of Economic Development, and there is a Director who, who obviously has to run that Office, and just because that person left and went to another job, that, that position is vacant, doesn't mean that at some point the position will not be filled. So, so then, when the position is to be filled, we then have to go and take this money from someplace else to, to fund the position. So, all, so we haven't done anything. We have not, we have not created any increased revenue, we haven't solved any portion of this budget, budget process, of the, of the hole in the budget. So, you know, I guess, I guess for me, it just doesn't make sense that we have all these amendments that are basically just moving money around and making it appear that we're, that we're saving money.
Alderman Proctor, then Henauer?
Well, I think part of this conversation, this amendment, is maybe you can provide more clarification on what the city of Springfield's role is going to be in the Sangamon County EDC.
Well, let's have that discussion. Well, let's have that discussion, and then have the discussion on whether we want to then take, then not have a viable, so this, that discussion should be, we don't want to have, do we want to have a viable Office of Economic Development, or do we want to join in on the countywide EDC? And if we want to do that, do we want to then take the money that's in the Office of Economic Development budget and allocate it to the EDC? But let's don't play this whole game with moving around money, just for the sake of...
If I could add some clarity, and Val Yezel can speak to it, I went to the EDC meeting earlier this week, and it was an informational meeting with regards to Q5 investors, which we are one. You know, we paid the chamber $100,000, and with that, we had some parameters that they would fulfill. They opted, some of those parameters haven't been fulfilled to the degree we'd like, but the intent is to transfer those funds over to the EDC. So, in that discussion, the EDC, it's still a work in progress. It's, you know, they haven't structured it exactly what they want. I think the next step is to look for a CEO, but the point that was made pretty clearly was that they're, and they're going to try to bring business to Springfield. They're not there to really maintain what we have or grow the inner city that our efforts would be. So, with regards to TIF, CDBG funds, anything of that nature, and I believe that a third of the Director's salary comes from the corporate fund, so...
Correct.
A small portion of what we're talking about impacts this budget, the rest comes from other sources. But that's the intent, is that the EDC would be a complement to what the city of Springfield's efforts are, or what the city of Chatham's are, or what Riverton, or all the others, because, you know, really, the migration in any county, the migration is to the cities. It's coming from the rural areas to the urban areas. That's what shows across the country. And so, that's why we focus on the inner core as much, because that goes to the point of, you know, having a walkable corridor that looks great, because you want to attract the young people to our inner core. And so, really, this is a complementary department to all the efforts, and really, where we're at, at the heart of our community, whether it's Sangamon County or beyond, is to work cohesively together, which we all commit agreement on, towards economic development efforts, and we all will grow in the process. Alderman Hen, or Val, did you have anything to add to that meeting portion?
No, no, just, just that it was still a work in progress, they were seeking feedback at the EDC meeting, they still had a lot of things that they needed to figure out. But they did stress the importance of, it was going to be about business attraction. And just something for you, when this was brought forth, it was before I was at the city, I was, happened to be on the editorial board of the SJR. And so, and because, just so you know right now, I am the Chair of the Regional Planning Commission, so I have a very vested interest in a regional approach to anything that, that we do in the area. And one of the things I asked was, well, how do other, it was just my question, how do other communities do this? You know, because we have other EDCs, and we have other cities that are involved. And so, I did some research myself, and I found out, as a matter of fact, I was on a phone call with someone even just a couple of weeks ago from, I believe it was Peoria, and I said, "How do you guys do this? How, how does it work? I mean, I'm just curious." And I had done my research online prior to that. And they said, "A couple of times, people have decided within the city to disband their economic development. Then they come to realize that they don't have a say necessarily always at the table." And so, they have reinstated, Peoria disbanded their EDC, their, their Economic Development Department at the city, and then they had to bring them back, because they realized after two years that that wasn't working. The city wasn't being able to, they weren't be able to be heard as well. And it's not to work against what's going on, because I'm a huge fan, if we've got somebody that has the funds to go to, to the trade shows that we've not been able to go to because of funding cuts, perfect, fantastic, let's go out and find those big companies and bring them back into the city, or into our area, because let's face it, wherever they relocate, if we're bringing people into our retail hubs, then that's all the better for all of us. So, that's just one of those things that, you know, I had looked at and, and thought about. So, that's some of the things that were reinforced at our, at the meeting the other day when we met with the EDC.
Alderman Henauer?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Turner, just to, just to give you an idea, there's, there, there are some other amendments that have, have positions that we've talked to Directors and whatever, and they say they're not going to be filled for six months. So, what we've, what we've done is we've taken that money, put it back in the fund, it goes back in the fund balance in a sense, so it builds up the fund balance. Am I correct, Jim? And then, and then, as we spend that fund balance down, we... And then, and then as we spend that fund balance down, we have it. But in this case, you've got a position where the mayor's not going to, not going to fill it this year, that I assume this fiscal year.
As long as you keep that contractual, I'm all right with it.
Right, right. And so, so the idea was to take that, put it back, and instead of having it appropriated and not being able to be used. So that was the whole purpose. And there's going to be some others that we looked at. And it's just a matter of trying to, to where we're not funding a position the whole year. That's all it is. It's not, it's not eliminating the position and it's only, it only affects this year, right, this particular budget.
And that's part of, and that's part of my issue. So, so you have this small amount of money, one person's, not even one person's salary, a portion of one person's salary that is going to go into the fund balance for this, for this year. It's, number one, it's a miniscule amount if we're talking about digging out an $11 million hole. The second thing is, next year, you're going to have to go dig the money out of, out of the fund balance and, and fund, fund the position probably. So what have you actually, actually accomplished? And it's a rhetorical question, don't...
Alderman Senor?
Getting back to you, Mr. Yezel. How did, when you, at the meeting that you and the mayor attended, how, what type of positions did they, they give as far as the City of Springfield would play in that commission?
That's still part of what they're trying to figure out. I mean, it really, what they had presented to us was kind of a structure of how they wanted things. But, but they asked for feedback and they got a lot of feedback. So I think they're back to the drawing board, trying to reorganize. You know, there's a structure where you have those who give larger amounts of money, those that give smaller amounts of money, and they combine. And our advisory and nature, and so it's, we really don't know at this point. I didn't come across, it didn't come across to me that there was a real defined role for any of us.
To reiterate something that you said, they don't want us to disband what we're doing now presently, they're just going to add to what we're doing and make it a countywide initiative, is that...
Well, I mean, I think that's what, I can't say, speak for them, you know, but I think that's, what they want to do is bring people. What they've recognized is, as we all know, is the declining population that we have. And then, of course, they started noticing declining in property tax revenue. So their suggestion is we bring more people to the, to the area. We need more people in the area. So they said to us that they were going to be focusing on business attraction. That was their goal, business attraction.
The next step is to hire a CEO. They thought that was, you know, have someone that has experience with the Economic Development Council or economic development efforts like that, do that first and then go from there. Because they didn't feel, or I think the majority didn't feel, that creating a structure and moving forward, and then you have someone come in and say, well, this isn't how you should have it. If you already have it in place, it's hard to pull back.
Are you, are you at liberty to say, like, any of the names of the, of the businesses that are involved in this thing, like?
They've been out there.
It's the same, it's the same as the Q5 investors.
It's almost exactly the same as Q5. I can think around the table, I could name maybe three.
Horseman and Levi Raines Shop.
Not LRS, no, no. Hanson, Troxel.
Crawford Murphy and Tilly.
Sam Taylor.
Memorial, yeah.
The list has been, the list has been in the newspapers several times.
Yeah.
But not for public debate yet. So Alderman Tyler?
So the, the lines for the contractual are still in the budget. And what is the funding source for the contractual?
The funding sources for contractual is the corporate fund.
So the funding source for, for the contractual is the corporate fund?
And that amount is? $200,000. And I think there's a proposal to cut it $165,000. But that's used for the chamber membership?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the director position.
That's where I've been paid, is out of that, yes.
Okay, so by doing this, we're offsetting some of what we're doing under the contractual on corporate, on paper. Because the choice would be, you're either going to have the, the contract employee or you're going to have a full-time employee. You're not going to have both.
My preference is have the contract employee and you're looking at her. So how are you, what I don't want happening is you cut all this funding and then you turn around and cut all the contractual funding and then, then I'm going to have to go search for it somewhere in the budget. It's too important to Springfield and especially our inner core to do away with that position.
But essentially, just for balance sheet type, Director McCarty, the, if we remove these, we still have the contractual lines, which we're paying for out of corporate fund. And then in next year's budget, the intent would be to bring back these lines and no longer have the contractual. Would be the intent?
That's the council's wishes, yes.
It depends on the actions coming forward. I mean, there's multiple amendments.
I know, I know, but it's, we're not having both.
I got you.
So as long as the contractual stays in place, this is fine if this is the pleasure of the council. So you want, any other discussion, Alderman Redpath?
The thing is, is that Alderman Turner made some good points. We, we don't want to lose this position and that's not the intent of this move. The intent of this move is to incorporate, in cooperation with the other amendments that are coming, is to save these people from getting laid off. And I can tell you right now, if it's, if it's, I have to make the decision between a truck driver, a fireman, or a policeman, I know where I'm going. And so the bottom line is, is that these are not made to, to remove anything out of that, out of that department. It's, it's a, it's a one-year fix because the mayor has a contractual person in that spot. So that's what this is all about, that's what the future amendments are going to be all about.
Any other questions on the amendment?
The line I, Alderman Hanauer that you were asking for, professional is...
Is that in our amendment? It could have been a line that we just...
Yes, it is. You did have it.
We'll address it when we get there.
Okay, okay, okay. It was 111, I think, or something, yeah.
Does this include the contractual or just the personnel? I'm asking, this is just the personnel line items? Okay. Associate with the director's position alone, that's it?
We'll never get out of it.
Is that correct, just the director's position?
Yes.
Okay. This only affects personnel with OPED dealing with the director's position. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, say nay. Motion, the amendment passes. Amendment number two by Alderman D'Essenzo represents the removal of Community Relations Division under the Office of Mayor.
Yes. I did speak with Juan a little earlier today and had a few different questions about it. Oh, go ahead.
Is there a motion to move it forward or discuss? Motion to discuss. And we can just discuss. Do we have to take motions on these for discussion?
If you would like to. Were you going to present, make a motion to adopt so there'd be debate or?
Motion to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah.
Second. But moving, second to discuss?
As Alderman Redpath said, we're charged with trying to cut the budget. And this is no reflection of Director Huerta or the work he does, but I think there is some duplication of efforts. I think that every single one of us around this horseshoe serves as a community relations person in our own wards across the city. And this is a, it's a, it's a big chunk. And I think there is a way that we can, I don't want to say get away with, you know, doing away with this office, but I think that everything has to be on the table going forward. And that's where I'm coming from on this amendment.
And Director, I mean, Corporation Council can speak to the need for this office, but Director Huerta can step forward and offer any other items of information. So Corporation Council, if you'd like to speak to the...
The, the primary function, I think, of Community Relations has been related primarily to EEOC and fair housing activities. And the city is technically required to have those activities in order to qualify for certain of the federal funding. So it's primarily been housed within the Community Relations Department, and that has been kind of a historical process.
So the, the title of the department's kind of a, it's kind of a misgiven with regards to that since it deals with many facets. It's just not like a public relations, Alderman Senor?
I have approximately 14 service agencies on between 11th and 18th and down Washington and Adams. And I had the opportunity to work with Director Huerta on a, probably the first year in office and we went to. And I would not want to have to do what he does on a daily basis. He's very involved with the homeless as with the shelter that he's done. And the case that we were involved in, I don't think I would want to do that day in and day out. So I appreciate you and what your staff does, because I've visited your office several times. You also have a community outreach with the, you had a community outreach, outreach with the railroad relocation, where they had an office and they had a training class come through there. So I appreciate you and there's not any way that I could approve of this amendment.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
This is the office that's responsible for receiving, investigating, and monitoring required resolutions of complaints of discrimination and disparate treatment as it relates to housing, employment, and other things. And given what's happening at the national, state, and local level, I don't see how in good conscience this council could even consider abolishing or getting rid of this department in any way whatsoever. I think that we as a community have a long way to go and we're not there. We're away, a long way from being there. And we definitely, what kind of city would we be if we did not have a place where residents could go when they have complaints of discrimination or disparate treatment? That's not something that you can just hang out and leave it willy-nilly to go here, there, or anywhere. So I would encourage my fellow aldermen to not vote to remove this office from the budget. I think it's, I think it's too important to who we are as a city. I would hate, I would hate for tomorrow to come and SJR reports that the city council, the City of Springfield voted to remove the Office of Community Relations from their FY19 budget. I think that would be horrible.
Alderman Proctor?
Yeah, just echo everything that Alderman Turner and Alderman Senor said. This office saves lives, so you can't go.
Alderman Don?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo again Alderman Turner's comments. It's, it's critical. I mean, unfortunately, in our city and other cities throughout the state and the country, we have problems, discrimination, discrimination problems. Juan, your office is, is charged with investigating those, and I know how critical that could be in changing people's lives. So I'm going to oppose the amendment wholeheartedly. But I do have one question, Corporation Council, related to the consent decree, because we were established, City of Springfield's unique. We were established due to the result of a lawsuit back in the 80s. And we have a consent decree that governs how we are set up. We are unique, believe it or not. In most cities, you would have more aldermen, and nobody wants that, right? But, but we are set up by consent decree. It specifies that we have a strong moral form of government, what departments we have. And I believe one of those that's set up in the, that's listed in the consent decree is this office, is that correct?
It is, I believe, one of the listed functions, governmental functions.
Thank you.
And I wasn't suggesting that we don't need an EEOC person or someone to deal with social service agencies, so maybe that wasn't clear. But maybe, I, I know at one point there were 15 people in this office, and now how many do you have?
Right now, we have four employees, five with me. And we cover a lot. Like, when I reached out to you today, I wanted to see if you had any questions about what we do.
Yes.
You know, the, the unique thing about this office is that we protect people's human rights. I mean, there is no other office in the City of Springfield that protects people's human rights. You know, we deal with a lot of single mothers, issue with landlord tenants, people that have no place to go, people that have no, no one represents them, and that's what we do here. You know, you guys did us a big favor back in December, you approved $6,400 for the, for the homeless shelter. Thanks to you guys, we're able to house 50 peoples every night. You know, we work with all the agencies in the City of Springfield, Salvation Army, Helping Hands, Contact Minister, the DC-186, UIS, Lincoln Land, and many, many more. Churches, the Ministry Alliance, NWC, Frontiers. So we do a lot of work, we do a lot of community outreach. You know, we work with the police department. You know, one of my bigger customers is Alderman Proctor. You know, anytime there is an issue with a neighbor, the police, I go over there to mediate that. You know, there's a lot of cases that don't come to you guys over here, because we fix those before it gets over here. I mean, some of you guys, it's been into the city council many years before, and you know the things that were coming over here. So we try really hard to fix things, to take care of the issues, to find, to find a medium. You know, that's what I do for a living, mediate, trying to solve issues and provide customer service. You know, I think, and one of the things that the mayor says to me when I first started working here is, we need to provide customer service. So now we have the railroads office in my office. So anytime we got phone calls about the railroad, they call my office. If I don't have, if I don't have an answer, I call Hanson Engineering. So, I mean, and we, we get duties as assigned, you know. Some of you guys, you know, send questions, email them my way, and, you know, my, my job is to research this situation till we can provide our customer service to our clients.
Alderman Don?
Alderman D'Essenzo, I've known you a long time. We were, we were much younger when we met.
Yes.
And I just want to be clear that no one, that I've known you a long time again, and no one thinks that you were out to get rid of...
No.
Investigation of discrimination. I mean, anybody that knows you knows that's not the case. But I do appreciate you bringing up any and all ideas, because we need to discuss any and everything tonight. And if nothing more than we've accomplished, more people probably understand the importance of this office.
Thank you for that.
Very good. Any other discussion?
He's a pretty good center fielder, too. We really need him on softball. I did it.
Well, that solves it. So then, let's see, amendment number three, sponsored by Alderman McMinimum, represents a partial reimbursement to the corporate fund for public works payroll spent on infrastructure projects transferred from...
Do we have to vote on this? Do we have to vote on this?
It was just discussion.
Just discussing.
I mean, was there a motion?
No. I think it was pretty clear.
Thank you. Transfer from 095 Infrastructure.
Did we skip over the, the furlough day?
I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I took it out.
Was that withdrawn? That was withdrawn.
Yep, withdrawn.
Motion to discuss this amendment, just to explain what it does. It allows infrastructure monies to be spent for infrastructure purposes. We have, in our infrastructure fund, at the beginning of this next fiscal year, we have a total of $37 million accumulated in the infrastructure fund. And we intend to spend down $27 million. And, but we've got five sources of new revenue coming in each year into the infrastructure fund. We have the, the earliest revenue sources goes back some time, it's 2% of the corporate fund goes into the infrastructure fund each year. And then in addition to that, we have the quarter of a penny sales tax, which Mayor Dablin's and council approved, and the hotel motel tax, which Mayor Dablin and the council at the time approved. And then we have a half a penny of sales tax, which the council at Alderman Turner, Tyler and I were on back when Mayor Houston was mayor, we had that. Those funds coming into the infrastructure fund. And then the same council dedicated the, the video gaming monies to go into infrastructure. So we've got, contrary to, you know, years ago, we have a very strong infrastructure fund. And so the idea behind this is to use the infrastructure fund for what it was intended for. We've got engineers, technicians, and others within Public Works that do infrastructure work, but now currently they're paid out of the corporate fund. And so this would allow $1 million to be paid out of the infrastructure fund. So that's the intention here, to use funds intended for a purpose, for that purpose. So...
And I believe, probably Zogardar or someone from OBM can speak to this. I believe that's how the accounting used to be handled previously. Is that correct?
We, we have three engineers paid out of the infrastructure fund already. Years ago, there used to be some folks paid out of MFT, and that I think is what you're thinking of, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, thank you for mentioning motor fuel tax, because that's another source of funding for infrastructure projects that comes from the state.
Great. Alderman Redpath?
Alderman, is this a, a one-year deal? Are you trying to, will this be continuing on for the next year? So it'll be, every year we'll take $1 million out?
That'd be a policy decision to be made by the council this year and future years.
And it'd have to meet Gasby... And it'd have to meet Gassby, Director McCarthy, if you'd want to speak to the accounting process, because this is similar to what we're using with the utility. As far as you, how would that be determined from a fiscal standpoint?
In this particular case, given the nature of the fund, the city council can authorize a sweep of the fund without even a cost allocation. Certainly, if you want to tie it to public works infrastructure projects, we would have to go out and do that analysis and set up a cost allocation methodology, which is easily doable. It can be done either way. The bottom line is, the council certainly has the authority to take money out of Fund 95 and move it to the general fund.
Yeah, we'd want to tie it specifically through a financial analysis and no sweeping of funds. Isn't that correct, Alderman Repath?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was saying. Thanks for saying it, Phil.
Alderman Turner?
Everyone knows that I'm pretty protective of the infrastructure fund, but I really think that Alderman McMinimum is correct with this amendment. And we're talking about a million dollars, which is actually a significant amount of money that would make a significant difference within the budget.
Alderman Proctor?
Fund 95 has, what, three buckets, I think? Like, the funding sources going into it, which bucket would this come out of? Or is it all of it, or how does that work?
There's four components to Fund 95. You have the capital improvement that handles debt service for the big three road projects and improvements to buildings. You have the regular infrastructure portion, you have the video gaming portion, and then you have the debt service for the big three-year project we just did. This particular, this particular transfer would come out of likely the infrastructure portion.
Which is funded by the
And just as an FY, currently, there is $41 million between video gaming and the infrastructure portion in the fund.
So the portion this is coming out, would that be funded, on the 2% transfer, or?
No, we would, it would be a legislative transfer that you authorized.
Oh, just, okay.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Sir, Alderman Tyler?
Could Director Mahoney come up? So Mark, I didn't get a chance to see, was this something that you addressed in the email that you sent out this afternoon? I didn't get a chance to read that email. I just wanted to give you a chance to convey your thoughts.
Yeah, and I sent a, I don't know if, I sent a follow-up email. I did have a discussion with Alderman McMinimum about the amendment. Our concern's always maintaining that maintenance program. Over the last several years, we've been able to, with that ramp up over three years, to get us in a position where our streets, our sidewalks, a lot of our infrastructure is in a much better position than it was several years ago. Alderman, or Director McCarthy has worked with us to kind of set up so we would have funding moving forward to maintain that. And that's roughly in the range, I think, this year, about $12 to $13 million. So our only concern is, we want to be able to maintain that going forward. Our street ratings as a whole, looking at our asphalt streets on a scale of 10, we're about 6.5. Before we started this program, we had quite a few streets in the 1 to 2. 1's bad, 2's bad, 10's good. So we got ourselves in a great position, and our concern is, if you take money out of that fund, and we're not able to maintain that, long-term, it's going to have an impact. But as, when I had a discussion with Alderman McMinimum, I don't think that's his intent. His intent is to continue the funding at that level. I guess the only question is if the funds would be there to maintain at that level as we go forward.
Alderman Donlin?
I just have a point of clarification. Director, what's the 2% transfer? How much money is that annually?
2% transfer on this?
From the corporate fund into Fund 95, what is that amount every year?
I'm sorry, I know what you're talking about now. The 2% is about just shy of $2 million.
Thank you. And keep in mind, video gaming, I don't think we've touched that yet. Have we? Video gaming money?
The force won't let us.
What's that?
The force won't let us.
Mayor, you did authorize $300,000 out of it for the overhead sewer program.
Okay.
And for public works equipment, also another 1.5 million.
Yeah.
Alderman Senor, you have anything? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
They moved in second. Discussion on the motion. And again, I speak to this. I think this is, you know, fair with regards to what we're doing with the utility. It's a crossover and be something that we can either, you know, do it year to year, or whatever the council's pleasure. But it's definitely appropriate, especially with Gassby fiscal policies. So voice call, I guess we'll just, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay.
No.
Motion passes. Proposed Amendment Number Four, sponsors are Alderman McMinimum, Donlin, Senor, and Proctor, represents a shift in funding for the municipal ban from general funds to tourism funds in the amount of $56,965.
Mayor, this is a similar, a motion for discussion.
Wait, hold it, hold it. So what do we do with the three?
We just
The passed.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear anybody say anything. Okay.
Second on discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, this is a similar ordinance to the one we just considered. It's using funds for their intended purpose, but this happens to be a much smaller amount. It's $56,000. The municipal ban plays at many functions for visitors each year. For example, on Monday at Lincoln's Day, at the American Legion pilgrimage, at the noon luncheon, the municipal ban was there for the roughly 200 American Legionnaires from around the country that were in Springfield. And they feel honored and privileged and respected by having a municipal ban there. So this ordinance, this amendment would allow us to use hotel motel funds to fund the ban and take some pressure off the corporate fund. So that's the idea behind this. And the co-chair of the American Legion pilgrimage, Mr. Mike Walton, strongly supports this amendment. He thinks that the municipal ban deserves this kind of safe funding protection every year.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to echo what Alderman McMinimum said. I talked to a couple of the board members, and they're very thankful that we brought this amendment forward. Thank you, Joe, for thinking of this.
Thank you for your support, Alderman Senor and the others that joined in this, Alderman Proctor and Alderman DeSenzio.
No, not me.
Donlin. Donlin, Proctor?
Just as a frequent attendee and stuff, and just appreciate that we found a way to make this work.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Alderman Donlin?
Mayor, I just, Alderman, I appreciate you bringing this up and thinking outside the box. It just, I don't know why it wasn't thought of sooner, because it does make sense. And there is a tie there, and it does promote tourism. It flows well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer?
I just would like to say that I appreciate this, too, because when I brought up the municipal ban early on, and again, I say it's nothing against municipal ban, but my point was, we have police, fire, we have a lot of people that this budget affects that potentially could get laid off. My only point was, you know, what's our priority? It wasn't a shot at the municipal ban, under no circumstances. They do a great job, and, you know, so I'm glad we could do this. I really appreciate this.
They just said submit your play election, whatever selection you want with the music. They'd be happy to learn it and play it for you.
Do you do "Born to be Wild"?
They play Rolling Stones and any chance for you.
Oh, my God.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay. Amendment passes. Proposed Amendment Number Five, Alderman McMinimum, represents a reduction of 1% across all corporate salary lines with fire, unemployment, health, and public safety pensions. Move for discussion?
Motion to discuss.
Okay. Go ahead.
This essentially tries to reduce our appropriated spending by roughly $400,000. And what it does is, it just shaves a small slice of each of the personnel lines of the major departments that have turnover, on the theory that at any point in time during the fiscal year, we have unfilled positions that are budgeted, but they're unfilled. So this is an attempt to close the budget gap, just in a small amount. And I understand there's another amendment that does this essentially the same thing by trying to identify the open positions and taking out money from the particular open positions. This one, I think, I mean, either way has some advantages. This one, the advantage is, if we just focus on particular positions now, you know, another position might open up tomorrow because someone dies or moves out of city employment, and we don't know what those positions might be. So this one tries to take a slice of funding out, sorry for the death idea, but it tries to take a slice of the spending out, and then leaves it to the managers to make the decision about which positions to fill during the fiscal year. So that's the idea behind this one.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, I appreciate what you're trying to accomplish. Remember the other amendment, we really can't focus on particular positions. That's not the, I know you know this, but it's not the function of the council. We're cutting particular line items that would reduce that amount. And so the, I know we'll get to that amendment and explain it, but that's why I'm not going to support this amendment.
Alderman Hanauer?
So this won't, this won't result in any layoffs? It's just, you're just cutting, like you said, open, open funding, or?
We're reducing the spending authority by just a sliver, knowing that some monies will never get spent during the fiscal year, because some positions will be open and will not be drawing down our payroll lines.
So I guess, Mayor, I'll leave, will this cause a problem with having to lay people off, or anything?
Well, I guess, I noticed in some of the other amendments, as Alderman McMinimum pointed to, I think they put 50% to make sure they're vacated for at least six months.
Right.
So I didn't know if it'd be appropriate for that we'd have to leave all corporate fund positions open for at least that six-month period. And if we don't, for some reason, we'd have to provide the list to the council. And with reasoning that, why we wouldn't do so.
Yes.
Would that be appropriate? I mean, would that cover it? Alderman McMinimum?
Since you're cutting everything by 50%.
We just leave it open six months, and if we make an exception to that rule on the corporate fund side, then we come with the list and let you know the reason for that. Alderman Senor?
Can you explain the public safety pensions? How can that be included in this?
It's not.
It's on, it's on my paper, Amendment 5. Thank you.
It says sans, plans not included.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see without. But, so you left, you said fire, unemployment, health, and public safety pensions. So what does that do with the police force, police department? Are you, are those available for cutting, or what?
Police is in there, first of all.
All the major departments are included. That'd be legal department, treasurer, or, excuse me, never mind.
Okay, you just have to explain the French, and I thought, I forgot the sans was French for without. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry to ask, ask another question, but I think it's an important one. I want to, I want to understand, since there's a significant dollar coming out of the police and fire lines in particular, or, excuse me, the police line in particular, it's $221,000, what does that mean to the number of police officers? I guess it's more for a budget question.
Well, it really comes down to the timing of departures. But what it means is that the police department will have to leave positions vacant longer, and it could mean less police on the street. Remember, when the budget was introduced, we already had cut $280,000, representing a THL, or turnover hiring lag, for the next class of police officers. We already had intended not to hire another class, or do another class of police officers until the back end of the fiscal year, rather than in the middle, like we would normally do. So what you're doing essentially is compounding the $280,000 with another $200,000. So you're talking about a $500,000-plus cut to the police department lines, which of course will have an operational impact that I think is best described by the chief, if you want to hear from him.
Chief would come up, please?
Good evening. What it means for us is basically, as Mr. McCarthy stated, when we built this, we built a six-month lag already in, on anticipated hiring and retirees. So as somebody retires, we anticipate leaving that open for six months, and that was the same as the $280,000. If we add another $225,000 on top of that, we may have to go nine, 10 months without hiring somebody. So when that happens, there's always going to be overtime that's going to have to be covered. We're going to have a safe amount of officers on the streets to do the jobs, to carry out our mission. So there's going to be overtime that's going to go up, but then our overtime is also cut. So it's one of the things that we're going to do our best to live within it. We know we're in a difficult position. We're going to do our best. You have difficult decisions to make, but that's the kind of impact it's going to have on us. So we could potentially be down several officers, you know, 12 to 15, for an extended period of time of up to, you know, 3/4 of the fiscal year. Not counting any other injuries, people going out on maternity leaves, FMLA, et cetera, that there's always seven to eight, sometimes 10 to 12 of those at any given time. And then you get the unexpected retirees of people who take jobs elsewhere and decide to, you know, enter a different field. So really, we won't know for sure the impact, because it's all dependent upon when people leave. We poll our officers every October to see who's intending to leave. Some have that date hard, fast, and set, and they tell you, and they stick by it. Others, it's kind of a moving target. So it just all depends.
Alderman Hanauer?
I guess just once more for clarification. Let's just say you don't have the turnover rate like we would anticipate, and we've got this in there where we're reducing, so what happens at the end of the year? Is that, do we have to, that, I guess that's my concern. I do not want to lay people off. Under no circumstances, I don't think, there's too many people, I don't think anybody up here really wants to lay people off. And I will tell you guys that right, right up front. So if we can, if this can be modified to go 50% of the jobs, like what you recommended, that at least that way, when they're vacant, it's a half a year's worth of salary that we're not spending. And that way, we don't get caught in this trick bag where somebody's going to have to get laid off at the end of the year. If nobody leaves, you know, and so we'll be after you to get some people gone, I guess. I don't know, but we don't, we don't want this. So I'm concerned about that. And I'm very concerned about that.
Alderman Tyler?
So, just to be clear, there's a vacancy in each one of these lines, or are we, did we just go across the board? Because if there's no vacancy in the related line, then you're not going to have the spending authority for that particular line item. Like, just to throw something out, we, the elected officials cannot affect their own salaries up or down. So for example, let's talk about the mayor, the clerk, and the treasurer. We cannot, as a council, increase or decrease the salary of those three elected officials. Is that in here?
Mr. Mayor? Alderman McMinimum?
Just to clarify, there's no intention to impact any operations with this amendment. In fact, just the opposite is intended. There's just a small sliver is being taken from the personnel lines. And we don't, as a council, we don't, we just are at the major object level, and so that'd be, the budget is trying to assign these to certain lines. That's not
And that's why I'm, it was more for Director McCarthy than for you. I understand that you're not trying to reduce, eliminate, do anything like that. You're just trying to account for the vacancies. But my question is, the way that the line items are written, is that going to impact other line items that cannot be adjusted and will have to make amendments or changes along the way, due to the way that this is written?
If I may finish my thought pattern, you know, the major departments have authority to move monies within their own internal lines to a certain limit. So they, there's some flexibility to fill the gaps if they need to. And then beyond that, if there would be an operational problem, there's always the possibility of a supplemental appropriation. So there's fixes for this, but the amount of sliver being taken here is so slight that the intent is to not lay off anybody with this, nor create operational deficiencies.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for passage.
They're moved. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moved in second? All in favor of the motion for passage, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay.
Nay.
Amendment fails. Amendment Number Six, proposed by Alderman McMinimum, represents a one and a half million dollar reduction in the regular salary line. The intention is no fire layoffs of new class until they graduate. Any layoffs or, any layoffs prior to graduation will be the decision of the fire chief and not the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that we defer this till the very end. I don't pick up any sentiment among the aldermen to support this at this point in time, even though I think we need structural reforms within the fire department. But I defer consideration of this.
Okay. We'll defer it to the end. Amendment Number Seven, sponsors Alderman McMinimum, Proctor, DeSenzio, and Senor, represents the intention to contribute monies through the city grant to DSI for event the city grant to DSI for events promotion and program support in the amount of $50,000. Discussion?
Motion for discussion. Thank you, Mayor. This is self-explanatory. It's basically to support the Downtown Springfield, Inc., which does very significant promotion activity, tourism activity for downtown, and to provide some level of funding so that they can do their job as best they can, and to promote Springfield and our downtown, and create economic activity, and spending, and sales tax, and all that goes with it. And thank you, Alderman Proctor, DeSensio, and Senor for supporting this.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, no, I think this is something that's a long time coming to help Downtown Springfield. I know we've helped, you helped out with the holiday walks this time around. I think this just puts a commitment to the city of the DSI to help them improve what they do and continue what they do and make it better. And I think, I think this was mentioned in the EDC report, the Sengman County was talking about, and so maybe this could be considered in kind for that when that comes time.
I guess a question, wouldn't this be more of a, we'd have to enter an agreement like we do with the chamber to specify certain activities that they would do, or would this just be a contribution to DSI?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. It would be subject to your contractual arrangement with DSI. The city would arrange it. And lastly, this comes from motel funds, so we're not using any monies that could go to the police or fire. We're using monies that are dedicated for tourism and visitor activity.
Okay.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, real quick question of budget. What do we presently contribute to DSI?
Nothing.
We passed a, there was a contract, it was on the OBM report, that provided $25,000 in the fiscal year that we are currently in.
And the other item is in-kind services from Public Works Police, CWLP, for other festivals, things of that nature.
Alderman Turner.
Is this, is this in addition to, or is this the funds from the hotel motel tax that we increased that we passed where a certain specific amount of money was to go to?
That wasn't earmarked for anything.
I thought it was. When we passed that, there was, if we got a specific amount, I think $100,000 over and above what was projected, it was to go to DSI.
Downtown activities.
Right. So that's, so my question is.
That wasn't mine.
I think that was before.
It was before.
Before.
Yeah. And so when we passed the hotel motel tax, there was a stipulation that said if $100,000 over what was projected would go to support downtown events. So my question is, is this $50,000 from that specific pool of money?
The answer is no. The hotel motel tax that you all passed last year was projected to bring in somewhere around $600,000. So you are absolutely correct. Your memory is correct. $500,000 of that going to Oak Ridge, the extra $100,000 was slated to go towards attracting and supporting events, particularly in downtown. That money flows through the corporate fund. This particular amendment calls for this payment to come out of Fund 21, which is the SCBB fund. So it is not that $100,000.
Okay, so did the hotel motel tax not, did not do what we thought it would?
I don't think it's going to be quite $100,000, maybe a bit less than that, or certainly that's an option if you want to change it, but that is corporate fund. The other thing to keep in mind is that Oak Ridge was going to come forward with that supplemental to get through the rest of the year, which was $75,000, which basically would have utilized all of that, that 1% increase.
Okay, so how does this impact, I support, I support supporting downtown, but I just want to know, how does this impact convention and tourism's budget?
I'd probably ask Pat to come up and share her insights. She's been here a few years as the finance officer for Convention Visitors Bureau. Pat Corcoran. If you could speak to where the funds would come from. I think there's a balance with Convention Visitors Bureau, and that's, I think, what the question is. How would that impact that particular fund, set-aside fund?
Well, our operating budget, our funds that we operate out of, over, if we continue to fund the band, you know, municipal band, or DSI, that's going to decrease our funds, that's $50,000 we could use for marketing the city to, you know, the globe versus the downtown area that's getting the one, part of the 1%.
But you're going to get a big boost from those online travel companies.
That's to be seen.
Aren't there funds set aside? Isn't there an amount? I know Gina, she set aside, I think it was like over a million dollars, that's set aside in case grant funding doesn't come through by the state, or can you speak to that?
Well, since, oh man, since back when Nikki Stratton was our executive director, so probably for the last 20-plus years, we've been very conservative about how we budget in order to protect our funds if the Illinois State Office of Tourism Funding were to be taken, you know, disappear, which a few years ago, we were pretty scared that we didn't get our funding until March. The grant program started in June of one year. We didn't get our funding till March of the following year. So we were able to continue our projects and programs because we do have a healthy operating budget.
Mr. Mayor, to answer Alderman Turner's question, there's no reduction of the budget of tourism by this amendment. What we're doing is we're drawing down a balance of funds that has accumulated in the Fund 21, the hotel motel tax fund. There's a ending balance of 1.6 million, and so it'd be a drawdown of that fund.
Would it be possible, though, since when we passed the hotel motel tax, we said that that money was going to be specific for downtown? Can we not take this $50,000 from that? Because it's my understanding that we haven't spent any of that money.
I think it'd be appropriate either source.
So do you want to leave it at the discretion of the administration with regards to that? Or we can vote on it. I think with regards to the $100,000, I, you know, that's more for, as Pat suggested, bringing groups here. So I view this more as adding to the visitors' experience. So I view it more from the 1.6 million or whatever the fund was that's designated as opposed to the other. Personally, I was in favor of the ordinance that was passed previously, where it specified that it would go towards downtown. Really, those funds were meant to expand, you know, the outreach with regards to Springfield. And so, but whatever the council's pleasure is, I think it's, you know, appropriate, we're going to try to find funds for DSI. So where those funds come from?
I agree with you. I wasn't in favor of it being specific to downtown either, but since it is.
Well, and, you know, we do have other areas of the city that we promote. We promote the lake, we promote the fairgrounds. Of course, we do promote downtown and our sites and attractions. So I, you know, I mean, it's the people on this horseshoe that get to vote. But that's also another $50,000 that we can use to promote our city, to, you know, the globe.
Would the sponsors of the amendment be adverse to the funding coming from the the dedicated portion of that hotel motel?
Not at all.
Director McCarty, then Alderman Proctor.
I just want to clarify, if you change the funding source, you are now increasing the corporate hole by another $50,000, just so everybody understands that.
But that's money that's designated specifically for downtown promotion, can't be used for anything else. So you can't use it to pay someone's salary. It's my understanding that as the ordinance was passed, that $100,000 is dedicated specifically for downtown.
I think it, and this is maybe a question for Corporation Council, what I can tell you is certainly it's a policy decision, but that money does flow into the general corporate fund. There isn't in a lockbox or in a dedicated subaccount or anything like that. So certainly, it's available. You're right. The ordinance does allow for it. I'm just saying, just the black and white bottom line is that it is $50,000 more out of the corporate fund.
So why do we pass an ordinance that has a specific dedicated, a specific dedicated purpose if we're not, if we are not using it for that purpose?
Well, it's for the promotion of downtown, so we can promote any type of festival. This, the way I view this, and Alderman Proctor, the sponsors can correct me, is this is more for activities that DSI would carry out. Isn't that correct?
For downtown.
Right, yeah.
For downtown. So it, and I beg, you know, what you do with SCBB is great work and everything, so I beg to differ, saying that if this money is taken out of that, then you wouldn't be promoting Springfield, because you would be still promoting Springfield.
I didn't say we wouldn't. I said it's additional funding that could be used to promote Springfield. $50,000 can buy you a lot of media.
I understand that. I understand that. But there's, I think, I don't even know what the balance is right now. The tourism, was it 2 million? It's, or what is it now?
1.6 somewhere around there.
So it's accumulating because of staff not being hired to pay out. And that's what I was also told was because we haven't been able to hire staff and keep staff, and that's been also helping keep the balance there. So until we get that solved, why don't we try to promote, you know, spend a little bit of that to, you know, promote downtown and other areas.
If we think it's going to be cut, will everybody call Director Jobe to make sure it doesn't?
He didn't call, so.
Alderman Hanauer, then Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm confused. I'm not, like I told Julie this week, I would not want to do her job, but, or Bill's either, or Dallas, they do great work. But I don't understand why things funnel through corporate when they should. I don't understand why this isn't in hotel motel and put it in a lockbox there, or whatever you want to call it, because, you know, when we're going through the budget, and you're going line by line, and you're looking at things, and then you say, oh, I can cut a little bit of this. And then we come back and you say, well, that comes from hotel motel, but it sits in here, or that comes from Fund 95, but it sits in here. I'm sorry, but keep it in the fund it's supposed to be, and write the check out of that fund or whatever. I don't know if you can do that or not, but, but, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me. Because to me, it inflates the corporate fund, and maybe that's what you're trying to do, but I don't know. It's, I'm not an accountant, don't want to be, God bless them for what they do, but I, for the life of me, I can't figure out why we do this kind of stuff. You start funneling money around to corporate, and not, all it is is funny money transfers, and it takes a lot, staff a lot of time.
To speak to that, I would like to say, because every year, as we book conventions and we agree to give a sponsorship to a convention, that could be two years out, five years out, eight years out, we reserve those funds. And we could have done that same practice with this month, this $100,000, and kept that aside in our budget to fund these other projects that some of the aldermen would like to fund, such as DSI, or the municipal band, or that type of thing. I mean, we can do that.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question of the sponsors. What's the intent for next budget year?
This would create a pattern of funding, DSI. In the current fiscal year, they were funded at the $25,000 level, and this would reflect a $50,000 funding level. It'd be a policy decision next year to see.
But, I mean, realistically, the intent is to have an ongoing relationship with DSI at that level, right?
I think that would be a fair statement, in the same way we had the relationship with the Chamber of Commerce for many years, at the $100,000 level.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, I think I agree with what Joe said, and I want to, maybe someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in the Sengman County EDC report, it said something about supporting DSI through that entity. So if we do this, then maybe that can be considered in kind to support that.
So the bottom line, can we use the dedicated fund or not?
The preference would be use it out of the, what was spelled out on the amendment, which was the reserve fund. And I would imagine that, being the good fiscal stewards that we are, if it ever reached close to the million mark, then we wouldn't use it. I mean, that's, I would think that'd be the intent.
Make a motion for passage.
Second.
Been moved in second for passage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay.
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 Roll call vote.
Alderman Redpath.
Nay.
Alderman Senor.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgencie. Alderman Proctor.
Aye.
Alderman DeSensio.
Yes.
Alderman McMinimum.
Yes.
Alderman Thailand.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
Yes.
Six, Alderman Hanauer.
You can say my name if you want, Frank. That's all right. But otherwise, I'm a nay.
Six yeses and four noes.
First you get locked out, and then you don't get to vote.
They're really getting after me.
Amendment number eight, sponsored by Alderman Thailand, represents the budgetary support for the reinstatement of a contractual sales program with Oak Ridge Cemetery, I believe.
Motion for discussion.
Motion for discussion. Go ahead.
This one, this amendment should actually, even though it puts a $50,000 line in the budget, nothing gets spent unless there's a sale to pay commissions on. So it's technically a revenue-based amendment that only if they get someone who bids on the posted contractual sales and comes in and actually makes a sale, will anything be spent. And our sales last year, if Director Lillis would come up, the sales were decreased dramatically from fiscal year 16 to 17.
Thank you, Alderman. I just want to thank Alderman McMinimum. When he said something about death, I thought he was trying to help me out.
I saw your ears look up.
So with respect to our preneed sales in fiscal year 2017 versus this last fiscal year of 18, it was about $100,000 less as a result of not having a contractual salesperson. And as Alderman Thailand indicates, the $50,000 is budgeted, but if the $50,000 is paid out, that means that he or she will have generated $500,000 worth of sales. So if they generate $20,000 worth of sales, they only get $2,000. If it's based on, if the RFPs come in at 10% commission, as it was in the past. So it basically doesn't get spent unless the revenue comes into Oak Ridge Cemetery.
Alderman Senor.
So would that person, the most they can make would be $50,000? I mean, what if, I hate to say it, but what if you had a banner year of DSI, and you sold? I'm sorry. Say, I mean, is this base going to be, I mean, is the ceiling $50,000?
It's just a projection, an estimate based on what our former salesperson had done. I think we had come back in the past for supplementals because he had actually paid, he had actually generated more revenue than what was appropriated, so.
And I didn't mean to be so crass, but I mean, and I apologize to anybody that's offended.
I thought I was supposed to be telling the jokes.
I'm not. I didn't mean it to be a joke. So I just needed some clarification. Thank you.
So I'm not, did I answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other pass? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Amendment passes. Amendment number nine, sponsored by Alderman Thailand, represents a provision for funding of the EDC contingent upon certain revenue enhancements.
Motion for discussion.
Second.
This would indicate an intention to join the EDC if we have the ability to do so.
And what do you mean by the ability to do so if there's revenue?
If there's revenue, or if we have budgetary amount, not using the fund balance.
Okay. So this is from the $100,000 that's dedicated to the chambers Q5 initiative?
That would be part of this. Is that a part of this?
And then the other part, I think that's what we pay Val's salary out of, too. So I guess that's what I'd like to discuss.
Well, this would be, this would be an appropriation for you to spend up to this amount, and it would be contingent based on whether one of the taxes pass, or whether cuts are made, or whether the money's available. Obviously, you've already committed the $100,000 from the former Q5, but my thought would be that if it's available, that I would like to see a commitment of $250,000 to the EDC.
And it'd have to come with an ordinance regardless, right, Counselor?
But this just gives you the spending authority if it's available.
So is it just for EDC, or would the, I guess, if you could speak to the line item, where we're at with regards to the budgeted amount in that line item? Director McCarthy or Julie?
I'm sorry, what?
I think Julie's pulling up.
Very much like what Alderman Hanhour said earlier, my intent is not to spend money that we don't have.
But I guess right now, there's $90,000 in there, and then you're mending it to go up to 250.
250 more.
250 more.
Yes.
Oh, so 340 total.
340.
Very good. Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion for passage and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay.
Nay. Nay.
Motion passes. Proposed budget amendment number 10 by Alderman Donlin and Hanhour.
Multiple discussions.
And this represents mainly the 50% reduction of, I think, staffing positions?
Right.
Is that correct? So had we covered that, or no?
Alderman, Donlin.
It is, thank you, Mayor, and Alderman Hanhour, if you'd like to add, it's essentially what we talked about earlier. It's taking identified vacancies and removing 50% of the funding with the, with the idea, as you stated earlier, that we would have a six-month hiring lag, and really, that's the simple summary.
The total amount would project out to be about $252,000, $13,000, based on vacancies right now.
That was based on the va, the last vacancy report we got from, from HR, and with the intent, I mean, as you, as you said earlier, with the intent that, that all future vacancies would, would have to be held, so that, so the actual amount would go up as, as we have vacancies, so.
And any exception we'd have to bring forward to the council?
I, I think that would be, right. And, and the intent is it, you know, I mean, if it's, if it's an emergency, we really got to have somebody, I don't think anyone on the council's going to try to stop that.
Okay. Alderman Donlin.
Mayor, not to belabor the point, but, you know, the, as you know, the 1,100 lines are a significant, a lot more than what's listed on the amendment, so the likelihood of needing to come back and ask for any money, even if there was an emergency of some sort for one of these positions, is very slim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
No discussion. Alderman McMenamin?
This includes a reduction of 50% of two of our attorney positions within our Corporation Counsel's office, and we've already reduced the budgeted headcount in the legal office from nine down to eight, and so if we've got a hiring process already in being, which I assume we do, this would complicate the hiring process within the legal department, and they're crucial services to the city, so I would ask that we amend, amend the amendment to delete the Corporation Counsel from this.
Alderman Donlin.
I would just, Corporation Counsel, is that, is that the case? Do you have something in place?
There are, there are, we had given up, you may recall, one position, there are two vacant. We were actually in the process of trying to hire one person, they'd been vacant for a while, at the, at the request of the mayor to try to watch the, this year's budget coming on. So my hope was to be able to fill at least one of those. We are in the process of doing that now. We would have to see how that, I mean, we'll try to work within that if we, if we need to, but one for sure, I would like to make sure that we've got, because we are, we are being slowly overwhelmed.
And we just, as a matter of fact, Julie just brought up the fact that we, we had asked them, our intent was only to, to cut one in half.
Okay.
So not two. So you will have that, that other one, so I guess in a sense, we have to take that and cut it in, take, take that, cut it in half again.
So the, the top one on the amendment, the first five lines would be half of, I would like to make a motion to amend the amendment to reflect that the.
We've got another one, too. Julie, you want to explain that other one after you say the first part?
If you look at the bottom of the amendment that has the EVL Agency 111, you all already did that. You already took the 1,100 series corporate director out of there.
Those five lines need removed.
Okay.
I'd like to make an amendment to, for the first five lines, make those amounts half, the reductions half of what is listed on, in front of you, so, and then the economic development ones towards the bottom of page one, we would remove those from this amendment.
Seconded to accept the amendment, moving the first section to half, affecting Corporation Counsel, and then the fourth section regarding economic development and removing those. It's been seconded, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. So the amendment of the amendment passes. And then if Director Mahoney would come up and speak to the TDL issue, I think there's no vacancies right now, but there is concern of slowdown of work, I guess.
That's correct. I think when you got that list, there was vacancies, but there's currently no TDL vacancies. So going forward, we're not sure, I mean, there's potential retirements later in the year, but we haven't received any notification of it this, this point, so there is some concern with what that would do.
Can you explain what TDL is?
Truck driver laborers.
Thank you, for those at home.
What's that?
For those people at home.
All those guys in the aisle.
They were in the vacancy list, I'm sure of it, so.
Alderman Donlin.
First of all, we're still talking about amendment number 10 that we just adopted, correct?
Right.
Okay. Now, I just want some clarification, Director. You and I have not had a conversation about whether those are filled or not, just, we were, we asked today even to make sure that we had a list of accurate vacancies, and here we are, being told that these jobs are filled. So what is it? Anybody know?
I think, I don't know, Director Mahoney, are they filled, or do you have any vacancies?
Those positions are filled, and I understand that the six-month lag, which has pretty much been our approach recently here anyway, but as we get retirements, our understanding is there's going to be a six-month delay on the hiring, which I think is the, just what you're trying to do, but I'm just saying, at this point in time, there's no delay going in, or no vacancies going into the, to the year, fiscal year.
So be any vacancies at this point in time and moving forward would be fit.
Unless it's considered an emergency and you come before the council.
With the exception of what was outlined with the Corporation Counsel, and then the other one's been acted upon, I think, on economic development.
Right. But I think the frustration, I, I shared Alderman Donlin's frustration, we, we went based on a report that we got less than three weeks ago, that was supposed to be accurate. And my concern is, I mean, there's, as, as everybody has done, a lot of work on this, and we're only as good as the, as the, the reports that we get, and, and it is frustrating when we come up here and we find out that that report wasn't accurate, so.
Has there been a TDL hired within the past month?
Probably January, I think, was the last one that came on.
Yeah, so I think the reports are probably a month lag, I believe, or something.
We haven't gotten the human resources report by January yet.
Yeah, so I think there's a lag, is what it is. I can't speak to the information provided.
But regardless, I mean, if it's been filled, there's nothing, we can't cut it, so.
Right.
Take it out. I make a motion that we remove the ones that are filled, I guess.
But we just, the amendment probably should be, leave all vacant positions open for, you know, a six-month period.
I'm, I'm good with that.
And then any ones in the future.
Since we don't know what's vacant now and what isn't, so.
With the exception of Corporation Counsel's assistant.
Well, that one, we gave back.
Okay. Okay. All those in.
That's the amendment I second.
Been moved and seconded to.
Amend number 10.
Amend number 10.
Alderman Senor.
We're not going to cut any positions, is that correct? This doesn't cut any positions?
It just takes off, half of the year's funding, it's a hiring lag in a sense, is what we're instituted.
But no live people are going to lose their job, is that correct?
There will be nobody losing their job on this, no.
I get it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of amendment as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Proposed budgetary amendment number 11 by Alderman Donlin and Hanhour, general cuts across all spending classes.
Motion to debate.
Go ahead.
Basically, what we did is we went down each line, and I'll give a good example. Some of them, they hadn't been, they hadn't been used in two years, so they appropriated the money, but they didn't spend any, so we just wiped that, we, we, we put that to zero. In the situation of the EDP lines, which I'm not sure, I don't have, have it all in front of me, but the EDP line, equipment line, what we found out is if we use a state contract, we currently pay, and John was here, it's, I think it's around a, $910 a PC, and if you use, if we go off the state contract, the price of a PC, and the high-end PC would be about 400, I'll throw, I'll round it about $450. So, so on the equipment, we're saving half. If we would, if we chose, and that's the high-end PC, if we chose to go with the lower end for the clerical and that, that price goes down to about $330, $340. So the reason why I cut that line was because we can buy computers that are just as good as what we have, it's just a different brand name, off the state, state contract, and save over half our money. And I think that anytime we can use that state contract for, to, to save money, we should, and we shouldn't be brand-specific on, on computers. It doesn't make any difference what, what brand it is. So, but the rest of it, we basically went line for line, looked at, at places where, and, and that's on the other amendments, too, looked at places where they haven't spent the money that they appropriated, and just simply cut that line down as much as we could, or in many cases, we just zeroed it out. So that, that's the whole premise of this, and Mr. Donlin.
I don't know if John wants to speak to that. John West on the computers, but why he comes up, Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, just, just one point of, just one additional point, and the total savings for amendment number 11, now this, this includes the corporate fund, the water fund, and the electric fund, is $2.2 million and some change. There's also going to need to be, based on some discussion and decisions that were made earlier, that we need to change.
Yeah, we need an amendment to this, to take out, to remove the $165,000 on page three, that, that equates to the, your, so we can make sure Val gets paid. I know she'll appreciate that. So that's just, that's just the contractual line, so we're, we're putting that $165,000, which is the 100 for Q5, and the, I think it was, there was a plan or something in there. So it's 165, so I, I make a motion that we.
Second.
They've moved and seconded to amend it by adding back in the OPED line item related to the contractual.
And, and as far as the utility, we did sit down with the utility, and we went line by line with them, and they agreed with the cuts that we, that we made, so they're, well, I don't know how agreeable they were, but, but at the end of the night, we, we were able to reach an agreement, so.
So all in favor of the amendment to add back in the contractual for office planning and economic development, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. And do we know what the differential is between the utility and the corporate fund side?
The corporate funds have 203, 788, which that 165 adjusted.
203.
788.
788.
And then what's the toll on the utility side? Do you have that by chance?
Utility on your, here, 1-899-995.
Tried to get 2 million. If Ted would've gave up more, we would've been able to, to hit that, so.
Okay.
Mayor.
Alderman Proctor?
What are the, maybe talk about this, but what is the cuts in the police portion? Is that the EDP stuff?
Most of it, yeah, I believe, where, where we could is EDP, let me find, since I don't have my, my computer here, which, which is where most of this is, it's hard for me to really say.
And a follow-up question.
Yeah, I guess I'd ask any of the directors or chiefs that have questions or concerns come up with regards to that cut, if they would feel strongly about those being passed. You'd come forward and express your opinion, we'd appreciate it.
Go ahead. Alderman Proctor?
Follow-up question, what is the, I guess, out of the utility, is 102 the electric fund? Is that?
101 is the, is the water fund, and 102 is the electric fund, yes.
What is the, the two big items in the electric fund?
One, let's see, I think the one for 500,000 was, John, was that the, it was contractual services? And again, we went, we worked through them on all this, and they agreed to the, to these cuts, and, and I will say that we, we walked in with 10.5 million in cuts, and we, you know, we weren't, the goal wasn't to hammer them, but, but to work with them and try to find where we could, and this is, this is what we came up with.
Doug, if you'd like to, rest assured, bless you.
Just to clarify, too, is that if we feel that we're going to need something out of that contractual services later, you know, and we have to develop an ordinance to bring it forward for that, that service, we would do a supplemental appropriation and ask the council for that money at that time, if we need to.
And then my last follow-up. What about the, the next one, the 532-5?
That 532, that's 2313, do you remember what that is, John?
Those are electrical supplies.
Yeah, it's TND electrical supplies.
Okay. Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in closing, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for the staff for, for sitting down and explaining why some of the cuts just wouldn't work for the health of the utility, and, you know, it's near, near $2 million, but I want to be specific, and we were, we said this two years ago when we made cuts to the utility, that, remember, we're cutting spending, spending authority. If the revenue is still there, the money goes basically in the bank account. So if, as the director said, if there is a need that comes along, it has to come, it's going to be a major expenditure anyway, it would have to come to council anyway, and that's when the supplemental appropriation would be made. So, thank you.
Great. Any other discussion? All those in favor of amendment number 11 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. Amendment passes. Proposed amendment number 12 by Alderman Donlin and Hanhour, represents the removal of a funding level equal to the requested appropriation for office and kitchen furniture. The amount of $36,000. $36,650.
Motion for discussion. The, what, what I did was, and it kind of came from, from the council, from, from our, from Tim Griffin's office and that, is we, we cut out chairs, these are the original chairs that have been in the council since, I think Abraham Lincoln was here, but seriously, they were, I think they're the original chairs from when Chuck first sat down in them, so we were looking, we cut that out because of, obviously for budget, and they came out of this office and kitchen equipment line, so I felt like if it was good enough for us to cut it, and, and they're, they're not a lot of money, but I, I felt like we could, we could go through, and everybody would have to share the pain, and they're going to have to, they're stuck with the chairs and the office furniture that they have for the, for the year. We do have an amendment, and I, I forgot to take it out, is the line with the clerk for $11,000, we were wanting to take that out, because that is some things that have to be done in the chamber, and I apologize for not getting that, that out in time. That's the two big monitors, right? Are all of them? And also, we have, there's another one, that, there's PEG funds that, that obviously we, we don't want to cut PEG funds, so.
So those two items?
Right.
4,000.
It's 4,000 and 11,000 is what the total is on that?
So makes it 21,650.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money, but I was cutting everything.
Amendment to amend number 12 to take out the fourth item down for $4,000 regarding PEG funds, and then the sixth item down regarding $11,000 due to upgrades to the city council chambers through the clerk's office. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, of the amended amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So any other questions on the amendment?
Move to pass.
To pass as amended?
As amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Amendment passes as amended. Amendment number 13 by Alderman Donlin and Hanauer represents reduction in amounts attributed for employee training and travel.
Motion for discussion?
Go ahead.
Okay, what we did here was we basically took training and we've had lots of discussion with Julie on what could be cut and what couldn't. What we originally did was we just took the training, or the travel and training lines and cut them in half. I'm not against training and travel by all means, but I think that in tight budget times, we have to, you know, instead of sending two people to a training, they may, or to something, they may only be able to send one, things like that. It's just a way, I think originally, the line, it was over $200,000 that we spend in, out of the corporate fund on training, travel, and registration fees and that. And we, talking to Julie, and there's some funds that we cannot, we obviously, we get paid to go to training, so we cut those out. And I think we cut out an awful lot, right Julie?
Police and fire.
Yeah, police and fire pretty much are out because we actually, my understanding is we actually get money back, so our training does, and they pay the overtime and everything. So we cut that out. But, you know, so that's, that's basically this amendment.
I'd ask Director Mahoney come up. I think he had some concerns about the public works due to licensing or certifications, things of that nature.
We do, we'll just have to watch it closely. I think, at first, we thought they eliminated more, but as half of it is out of there, so we'll just try to manage through it. Because we do have certifications on the engineering side especially, and there's some other training that we have to partake of, especially on the building zoning as well. So I've talked to actually Magrodi, our fiscal officer, and we today sat down and kind of went through it, and we'll do our best to manage through it and get those required certifications done.
And if not, just bring the need to us in a supplemental?
And originally, what I was going to, my intent was to take half of all the training and just basically hand it over to you, that we did this with, at the state, took half the training and travel and hand it to your office and you make the priorities, but it was going to be a complete nightmare and-
And we appreciate that. Not doing that.
And to that note, we understand that the, we understand that the process for approving travel and things of that nature, there is a set process in place and you're involved in that as the CEO of the city, and so there wasn't a need to mess up the accounting, so to speak, so.
Good. Any other discussion? All those in favor of amendment number 13, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Amendment 13 passes. That is for $21,150. Then amendment number 14, the final amendment by Alderman Donlin and Hanauer regarding reducing funding for various CWLP vacancies.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, I'll make a motion to adopt amendment number 14 first.
Second.
Okay.
And then, thank you, Mayor. This amendment is essentially what was done on the corporate side.
50% rule?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion?
A discussion, we hear from Doug or John or anyone else regarding how this might impact operations?
I mean, basically, what we did was we went line by line on the vacancies of each one that we had and looked at which ones were being filled, which ones were being, we kind of, you know, we're estimating that it would be maybe a 3/4, 50%, 25%. And worked that back through our finance department to produce the numbers here.
You can live with this?
Mm-hmm.
If I can, Mayor, he's absolutely right. And sorry, we've had a long night, but some of them are only a quarter of the, we only took out a quarter of the year and some are half. And that was through reasonable, I think, good conversations and trying to get the flow of when the hiring is needed and so forth. Thank you.
Great. That amount was $868,147. Any other discussion on the amendment 14? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So we pass amendment number 1, 3.
We still have 6, it was delayed.
Oh, 6, sorry. Yep, that was the, thank you very much. That's sponsored by Alderman McMinimum, represents a $1.5 million reduction in salary, regular salary line. The intention is no fire layoffs of new class until they graduate. Any layoffs prior to graduation will be the decision of the fire chief and not the city council. Discussion?
Motion? Do you care to bring it forward or discuss, or?
I think that the general public out there is seeking significant changes and restructuring within our fire department to create efficiencies and economies of scale. And I realize that much of the change that needs to take place will be through the collective bargaining process. But I don't, unless someone is going to second the motion here, I don't see any need to discuss this further at the council meeting.
Does there, anybody wish to second? Very good, thank you very much. So the amendments that have passed, and again, thanks to all the aldermen for your diligence in bringing forward these amendments. Number 1, number 3, number 4, number 7, number 8.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer 2018-051 until after 2017-558 at this time.
Okay.
Second.
So moved and seconded to defer 2018-051 until after 2017-558? It's been seconded?
Where'd Alderman Hanauer go?
He drank too much water.
I think he said, I think he said the clerk could vote for it, is that right?
He didn't prepare like an astronaut tonight.
But the other amendments that made it through are number 9, number 10, amendment 11.
Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask for a five-minute recess? It has been a long night to use-
Amendment 3, or 13, rather, and amendment 14.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to take a five-minute recess. Thank you, we're recessed. Do you have a motion to re-adjourn the city council meeting?
So moved.
Re-adjourned.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I can't hear you.
Ordinance 2017-558. That's an ordinance amending Article 6, Chapter 100, Section 100.52 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by increasing the local tax, sales tax, from 2.25% to 2.50%. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved for approval and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question about the consequences of, of a lack of action this evening on this particular ordinance. What happens, what happens? I think that's the question that everybody wants to know the answer to. And specifically because it's one that was, is and was near and dear to my heart when I was knocking door to door throughout Ward 9 and pledged to be for police, fire, and public works. Those are the three main areas, obviously, the highest, if you add them together, the highest expenditure area for the city of Springfield. And I want to know the impact to police and fire specifically, and then we, maybe we can get to public works as well. What will happen if this doesn't pass to police and fire? How many firefighters? How many police officers?
I guess I'd ask what the gap is based on the amendments. Do we know that number?
Currently, it's 5.3 million.
Still, there's a gap?
Yes.
And Director, if things continue, and let's just say optimistically that they stay the same, what's that gap next year? Greater than 5.3 million?
Assuming things stay the same, I mean, we had done an estimate, assuming the taxes pass, and we're looking at a roughly $2.5 billion deficit next year. So certainly, if they don't, it grows by 4.3 for the sales tax, and it would be another 1.5 or so if the gas tax doesn't pass.
Yeah, but is that estimate based on before we made the cuts to this? So we're not going to be transferring over fund balance?
Well, some of the cuts that were made tonight were considered one-time. So certainly, if they're repeated, then you've got 1.3 million roughly that you would reduce that by. But if they truly are one-time, or some of them, then of course, whatever numbers are one-time, that would not help next year.
To answer your question, it's, you know, 80% of the corporate fund budget is personnel, so it's hard to avoid that. For myself, I spoke out with regards to police, to me, that's untouchable with regards to that. There's, you know, strained, they've been cut in the past, and so hopefully, the sales tax passes and then we move forward as I presented originally.
Mr. Mayor, if it doesn't pass, though, is it safe to say that the new class of firefighters that were hired and brought on just a few short weeks ago will have to be laid off?
There would definitely be a delay of hiring.
So the answer is yes. And what about on the police side? I know you said you wouldn't touch it, but, I mean, eventually, there's going to, would have to be something done, correct?
Possibly. What we'd have to do is regroup and see where the cuts would fall. I mean, that's what it comes down to, but there would be, you're talking personnel, no doubt about it.
And is it safe to say that the public works department would have to be reduced, services would have to be reduced, whether it's people's or actual services?
That's correct.
That's a good possibility. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
You know, when I was, I've made a hard line against taxes and, you know, I've told people in Ward 10 that the only way I could vote for taxes is if we cut to the bone. And I've been through, what, three of these now, and we've cut, I've cut this to the bone. And I just, I'm concerned at what happens if we don't pass this tax.
Right.
I'm deeply concerned. And, you know, it's, I've had a lot of, I've thought a lot about it and, you know, I think, like I said, we've cut this thing as far as we can cut it. There's no more, there's no more fluff. And not only did we stop at the corporate fund, we cut CWLP too. We didn't stop at the corporate fund, we cut CWLP. They're not immune to this. And when they, when we went to meet with them, they said, why? Our funds are good. And I said, well, they might be good now, but they may not be good down the road, and you're no different than anyone else. I'm going to be a yes vote on the tax, and I don't want anybody to pass out on that, but I, I'm doing it because I don't, I had somebody contact me today that had the fire department at their house, and it literally saved his life. And he begged me not to let firefighters get cut. And, you know, it hit home. And I've been, unfortunately, I've had that same situation where I've had to have firefighters, and I was looking for big boots because I'm kind of a big guy. I wanted them to be able to lift me up without dropping me. So I do intend to vote yes for the taxes, for this tax. I'm still a no on the natural gas, so you didn't get me all the way, Bill, but I will, my intent is to vote yes today, and I ask the rest of you guys to really consider it because I think it is important for the future of Springfield.
No doubt. Alderman Proctor?
I join you, Ralph. I can't, I think, to borrow your analogy, I think you're right, because we have cut the bone. If we cut any further, bones can be broken, and bones break. That's when it all starts coming down more, so.
Alderman Tyler? Alderman Turner?
I've been in conversation with aldermen for the last two weeks about this tax, and it's been very, it's been a very difficult situation because none of us want to be in a position where we're putting a tax on residents of the city of Springfield. But the flip side of that is, I represent people in Ward 3 that have seen, for whatever reason, perceived or reality a decline in city services, that things don't come to Ward 3 as quickly as they should, or in the magnitude that they should. And the reality is, if this tax doesn't pass, I'll go back to the comments that I made at the beginning of the meeting, that even though, you know, we had these amendments that cut a lot of things, we're still not making a significant dent in where we need to be without having some type of revenue enhancement to add on with those cuts. And if, and if we don't have those revenue enhancements, the reality is, this is, this is a time when the rubber's going to hit the road. There will be a decline in services that we will be able to provide. There will be layoffs. There will be rigs taken away from fire stations. All of that will happen. So this is not, you know, this is not the mayor doing a doomsday speech to, you know, kind of scare people into reality about it. This is the reality that we face. So as much as I, you know, hate voting on a, on a tax, I don't know how I can, how I can in good conscience put the city and especially the people that I represent in Ward 3 in that position where they will see a decline in the services that we are receiving now. People, not too many months ago, aldermen were saying that we needed to have more additional branch and leaf pickups. Well, instead of having additional branch and leaf pickups, we won't have any, or it'll be reduced to maybe one a year. All of those things that we have come to rely on and just know that they're going to be there. There's talk about police officers and body cams, and that's something that we all fought very hard for and thought it was very necessary. And I know that I have seen the significant impact that those body cams have had on not only the work of the police department, but the residents that they are charged with protecting and serving. So, you know, it's, it's been, it's been a difficult time, it's been a very difficult time, but I don't see how I cannot, I guess I'm like Alderman Hanauer, I don't think there's any place else to go.
Alderman Tyler?
No one wants to do this. No one wants to. But I do have to say that the aldermen have put in the time with the budget book. This thing, and I'm going to borrow Joe's prop here, it's that thick, and that's before the amendments. And it's got probably 45 lines to a page.
6,000 lines, right, Joe?
6,000 lines that we've been through for the better part of six weeks. We did the budget workshops, we've grilled the directors, we've thrown out ideas, we've thought outside the box, we burned the box and threw it away. thought outside the box, we burned the box and threw it away and asked for a new box. We've tried. And the simple answer is, is that my constituents, my friends, my neighbors want a certain level of lifestyle to live in this city, and there are certain functions and features that they expect. We've done things in the past. When I first came on in 2007, Ald, back at the time, it was Alderman Griffin instead of Council Coordinator Griffin, we found out, along with then Alderman Mahoney, that they were replacing entire blocks of sidewalk to take care of a couple of spots. We've already made that adjustment. Now they come in and they fix a spot, I personally am not worried about a 12-foot section being a brighter color than the rest of the block. I think I'd rather have seven blocks fixed that way than have one really nice, pretty one that's all the same color. And I think most of you feel the same way. We've added common sense approaches year after year after year. But this year, there's just not enough.
Any other discussion? Alderman McMinimum?
I'll be a no vote on this, and I'll explain why. And just a couple of side comments. Layoffs is a, is a timing determined by management, and the timing of a layoff can be at any point in time. And so to the fire new class out there, it'd be a horrible mistake to lay off before graduation. But getting to the main points, first of all, Mayor, I want to credit you for proposing the natural gas tax, because it's a better tax to raise, because it obtains contribution from our hospitals, it obtains contributions from all the state properties, because they'd have to pay the natural gas tax to the extent they use Amarin natural gas. So it gets contribution from places where we don't get contribution now. And we don't want to hammer our sales tax again, because we're putting all our eggs in the same basket, because sales tax is truly flat to falling right now. So it's, and it's going to stay that way because of e-commerce, which we've talked about. But I want to explain more the fundamental reason why I'm going to vote no, and it has to do with our constituents out there, and what I'm hearing from our constituents. What I'm hearing is, we have a tax and spend problem, and I want to explain that tax and spend problem. I don't mean to offend anybody, but we have over 280 of our city employees that make over $100,000 a year. That's W-2 wage compensation. And that's based on 2016 numbers, because the 2017 numbers don't come out for a while. And then we have another 500 city employees that make between $75,000 and $100,000. And our general public looks at that, and they want to see some contribution from our city employees. Now, we can't dictate that contribution at the city council level, because most of those city employees are represented in collective bargaining units and agreements, and that's a function of our mayor. But in the long run, we need cost containment, and we need contribution from our city employees. We have a limited time zone left to try to get cost containment from our existing employees, because once they retire, those pension benefits are locked in place. And we're starting to see, you know, our well-paid city employees retiring at high levels of pay, and then they get high levels of pension. And I'll just give you seven examples. We now have, from police and fire, we've got seven individuals that have retired and that are pulling over $100,000 of pension benefit per year. Now, those individuals are all Tier 1 individuals, and when they retire, their cost of living adjustment is 3% per year compounded. So those seven individuals, the way the math works is, their pension benefit will double in 24 years. So the highest paid of those individuals is a retired police chief making $115,000 right now. I think he's my age, 65. So when he reaches the age of 89, he'll be pulling down $200,000 in pension. Now, our, those that vote for us look at that, and they say, "Do something about that." And we haven't done anything about it. And so I'm not going to become a yes on these, a significant tax increase until we do something about it. And I, that starts with a declaration from our elected leader. And so I'm explaining why I'm going to be a no vote on this. We need, our Tier 1 employees, you know, they, about half of our employees now have the sweetest pension, and then the younger guys have a less sweet pension. So I would like to focus that cost containment on the highest, on the Tier 1 employees, and slow down their rate of growth. And so please understand, we've got a really serious situation in our city with a very, we've got a double structural deficit now, because we haven't turned around the proper funding of our pensions. You know, we've had a record bull market for nine years, but the funding level has stayed kind of flat for those nine years. So we haven't turned around that structural deficit. And then our second structural deficit is, we have a situation now where, without continual tax increases, our revenues are kind of flat, but our expenses keep going up like that. And at the same time, the median pay for our, those that live within the city, the median household pay, adjusted for inflation, is flat to declining. But the public looks at our, our city employees, and their pay keeps rising. And so we've got a really significant problem in terms of our citizens trying to understand the pay levels of our city employees. So no offense to anyone, I've got a military pension, I study pensions very carefully, having served 65, I'm 65, I've served 30 years in the Army National Guard. You know, I study those pensions. You know, it's $18,000 a year. You get a pension, you got to be in rank three years. It's not this deal where you get promoted to battalion chief, and you retire the next day, and then your pension has spiked. You don't get that in the military. And our, and our cost of living is, we had a few zero years in cost of living. And you got to wait till age 60 at the Army National Guard to get your retirement. You can't pull it early. So I compare the benefits of our, for example, military pension, and that's why I feel comfortable talking, because I wore the uniform, I got sent overseas, I know what mortar sounds like coming in. I know you come back injured, maybe not outward, maybe inside in various ways. But so, please understand, that's my rationale, and no offense to anybody, but we've got to live within budgets, and we've got to live within our spending capability, within, within limits, basically. You've got to live within limits, and I don't see that we've been doing that for 20 years. So please understand it.
Yeah, we appreciate your insight on that, because you're correct with regards to the escalation of salaries, and that's something Corporation Council and others have worked on through the collective bargaining agreements, and we will continue to do so moving forward. So the only other point I'd like to make is, you know, it's what Alderman Hanauer said is, you know, we all say things, you know, I said I wouldn't bring back the natural gas tax. As a matter of fact, SJR asked me, "Why don't you bring him forward the natural gas tax?" I said, "Well, if I want to put my head on the table and have everybody hit it, then I'd bring it forward." But that's because last year, I got beat up so much from bringing these four revenue enhancements forward. I mean, that's a tough choice. I figured, you know, some would pass, but only one did. I appreciate the council members reconsidering the sales tax. Hopefully, that goes forward. Hopefully, the natural gas goes forward, because it is designating that go towards pensions, and then the following year, pensions and equipment. But it does diversify our revenue source, and that's what we have to look at, is moving forward. You know, we can't change the past, we have to change the future. And that's what, we hope that we're all in unison on that, and tonight showed it with the amendments. So I appreciate everybody's insight. You dove into it diligently, and we can't thank you enough for doing that. I brought forward some thoughtful changes to the budget, and hopefully, the sales taxes is considered as well as the natural gas in March. Alderman Seanor?
This is a very hard decision for me. I too kind of echo some of the sentiments that have been expressed around the horseshoe here. But Director McCarthy, with the passage of either one of these two taxes, next year, are we going to be in the same position where we'd have to pass, think about passing taxes again?
Currently, if, we're projecting that if both taxes pass, and irrespective of the amendments that passed on it again, because you'll have to make those decisions next year, the assumption is a $2.5 million deficit in FY 2020, primarily because police and fire pension obligations are projected, according to our actuaries, to go up another $1.4 million.
Okay, so we're really not addressing what the real need is by passing the taxes. Is that a fair statement to make, because we'll still have a deficit next year?
I think we're addressing the need, it just depends how big that hole is. And to speak to that, let's take, we need to, everybody out there, call your state legislator, call all the elected officials from the state, because they are putting the pressure on local government. Same with the federal. And, you know, no offense to Governor Roner, I've supported him on some issues, I haven't on others, but to come back and the income tax was supposed to be rescinded, well, in the speech, it's not going to be. It's going to continue on. So that's where the 2.5 comes from. It impacts us. And so it's incumbent upon everybody here to call your legislators and tell them that's not right. We're tired of the trickle-down economics that really hammer us on a day-to-day operational, you know, work of life. And that's, that's, you know, it's the unfunded mandates, and that's not acceptable. They shouldn't have done it last year. They took away our income tax from the local distributed fund, they're charging us for our sales tax administration. That's not acceptable. And then also on the pensions. I mean, those are decided at the Capitol. So that's the unfunded mandate that we have to pay for. It's easy to vote for sweeteners. You get lobbied. The police, fire, all the lobbyists do their job. They're representing organizations. They go to the Capitol, and they represent organizations, just like everybody else. And they put the pressure on, and the officials voted in. Well, they don't have to answer to the public like we do, but now we have to answer to the public, and we are sick and tired of this trickle-down economics where it puts the income or the expense side of things on local government. We want to provide the services. We're the heartbeat of government. They need to stop doing that mandate on us. So that answers, unless Director McCarthy, but really, let's take a look at the budget. The budget is based on the information we have at this point in time. That's what it is. So right now, the one point, hopefully, the income tax doesn't move forward. Hopefully, there's enough legislators that say, "No, that's enough. We have our own IML that will lobby against it." Hopefully, they say, "That's enough, we're not going to do that," to the locals, and then hopefully, they reduce the sales administration fee, and that's like $400,000 to us, and that impacts our budget. So if that happens, where they don't enact what was proposed, then we look better. But if they enact where we think it might go, that's 2.5 million, or who knows? But again, you know, depends on the bicentennial, you know, sales tax revenues, if we get the added quarter percent, if we get the natural gas, which, and, you know, just for everybody's information, the natural gas is a tax on Amarin. More than likely, they'll pass it down to the customers, just like we do with the pilot and CWLP, that's the same thing. That's a discussion for, you know, March, but we're here to take action to minimize, minimize the gap. But we'll manage through it, we will, because that's what we're elected to do.
And Mayor, just to be clear, the sales tax is .025, not .25, so that would be another quarter on every $100 spent, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, you know, I agree on the, on the natural gas tax, but I can't support that one, because, like you said, that's going to be a pass-through, and we have a lot of people in Ward 2 that are on fixed incomes, there are a lot of seniors that this natural gas tax is going to affect, it's going to affect us as a city because of the number of buildings that we have, and the number of facilities that use the natural gas, so...
I think that's what you have to weigh. Alderman Hanauer spoke up, Chief could speak to it. What's the value of a life? What's the value of that service? Is it worth the natural gas tax? I say yes. That's, we want to keep that Class 1. We want to keep the police protection, even if it's a reduced level. We are at the lowest level of employment in over a decade, or close to it. But, you know, that's what you have to, that's the answer for all of us. You have to vote your conscience, because what is that level of service we want to provide our citizens? And you need to go out to springfield-il.us, look at the comparisons with the revenues. We have the better police officers, we have the better fire department, but we aren't funding the city of Springfield to keep up like they do in Peoria, like they do in Bloomington. But we're asked to do more, but we're not giving the financial resources up to the same taxation level as those comparable communities. So any other discussion?
Mayor?
Alderman Donald?
One quick thing, because it hasn't been mentioned. I think a key component of a successful city and a successful county is to have a strong economic development effort. And I'm glad that you mentioned that the meeting yesterday went well. I think the city pending some structural changes to the representation of the group should be involved in economic development on a county-wide basis at a minimum, and even look for other, other regional opportunities. You and I have discussed that, that exist, and because we, I mean, we have got to get new businesses here, new employers here. We've got to get the ones that, we have to help and work with the existing employers in expansion. And quite frankly, that all leads to more people, new residential subdivisions being started for the first time on a, on a large basis in a great number of years. Those things have to be done. And I'm committed wholeheartedly to doing whatever it takes to get those things started. We want to work with you, the county, whomever, because it's never been more important.
Well, whomever is everybody in the region. It's everybody's responsibility for economic development, and that's what we've talked about forever. And we really have to thank those that made the commitment to Springfield. You know, you have family businesses, LRS is a perfect example. You have St. John's Hospital, Memorial's built it. We have a lot of good economic activity going on right now that seems to be overlooked, but it takes all of us to promote Springfield, not just on the economic development side, but the tourism, they go hand in hand. So, and that answers, that's part of the answer to what Alderman McMinimum, and, you know, he's right, you know, he keeps bringing it up. I know it gets tiring at times, but that's the truth. I mean, we have to do something. It's a structural deficit that Director McCarthy has pointed out last year, and probably previously, to move in a positive direction towards our future. So economic development will solve a lot of the ills associated with that, but that's everybody's responsibility. And really, we can't thank the business community that we have here today. It's incumbent upon all of us to work together to make sure that we're attracting the businesses that will help theirs grow. That's what it's all about. Any other discussion?
Call to question.
All those in favor of 2017-558? Vote yes, those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, three voting no. Next item on the, thank you very much, next item on the agenda is 2018-054, an ordinance accepting RFP number HR18-66, authorizing, oh, nope. We scratched that.
We're on the budget.
Yep, the budget one. The next item on the agenda is 2018-051, an annual appropriation ordinance of the city of Springfield, Illinois, for fiscal year beginning March 1, 2018, and ending February 28, 2019. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2018-051 on final passage.
Motion to place 2018-051 on final passage as amended.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to place final passage as all the amendments. Discussion, I know we had Avery, Aaron Pearl, and Leslie Thomas signed up to speak. If you'd like to come forward.
Excuse my appearance, panel, but...
You look good.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, my name is Aaron Pearl. I'm currently employed as a truck driver labor for the Department of Public Works. My fellow brothers and sisters from Local 3417 are sitting behind me. We had more than this, but a few of them had to leave. We're out here tonight with concerns about the inability to resolve Springfield's budget issues. Also, this current issue deals with the livelihoods of our families. We are taxpayers, homeowners, and a majority of our revenue is spent within the city of Springfield. We as employees feel that management and elected officials should be held accountable. We too have a voice, we have solutions to offer. We're asking this board to take our suggestions into consideration. Currently, this, currently within the city of Springfield, the four departments, CWLP, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and Public Works, the Department of Public Works has the least amount of employees and the lowest budget. Some of the other departments' budgets doubles ours or almost doubles ours. Public workers have already made concessions for the sake of the city budget. In previous contract negotiations, the Department of Public Works agreed for a split-tier system in pay. This department has been more than willing to work within the city of Springfield in terms of cutting costs. With that being said, it's time for the leaders of this city to lead by example. Some of the suggestions that we recommend is for all elected officials to refuse a salary until the shortfall is remedied. We call for contracting to cease... We call for contracting to cease, for all contracting to cease until the shortfall is remedied. Currently, our union president has three RSP bids for contract proposals in the last three months, which is contracting out work that Public Works Department could be doing. We call for management salary increases to be rescinded until the shortfall is remedied. We call for layoffs of all unnecessary management positions until the shortfall is remedied to be called off. We call for reconsideration of the fleet maintenance contract until the shortfall is remedied. We call for the suspension of all overtime requests without exception until the shortfall is remedied. Public workers believe that while these remedies may hurt our great city, sometimes this is what has to happen to right the ship. The public servants here tonight are full of courage, ready to do the work necessary for the city that we love. Despite the cold, we plow streets of, we plow the streets of Springfield. Despite the heat, we patch and fill holes in our streets. No matter the time, we answer the calls to address the problems that face our city. Many times, we're even taken away from our families to come answer the call. We often went over and beyond our duties of representing this great city. In closing, I would like to thank the mayor and the council for taking the time to hear our concerns, and also for passing that tax referendum. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "Faith has taken the first step even when you don't see the whole staircase." So we are asking the mayor and our elected council members to come together, work as a team to resolve this city's budget issues. This is an issue that is going to take both sides to come together for a common goal, because remember, when people lose trust in their government, all hope is lost. So as we as public workers are putting our faith in your hands, that the necessary decisions will be made to raise revenue for our current shortfall, it is time for our elected officials to stand up, vote to pay for the services and the quality of ours that our city deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd, if you could get a copy of that for the clerk?
Sure.
Yep, thank you. Leslie Thomas? Would you like to come up and speak? Anybody else wish to address the budget before? If you'd like to come up and speak, we'd appreciate it. Just state your name. Yes. Name and address for the council.
Wait, Mike.
I won't even take five minutes, because I talk fast.
Take your time.
Bonnie Billick, I work for the Public Works. Besides just passing out keys, which you thought I did, my title's an inventory coordinator. Unfortunately, about five years ago, I decided to move out of the city of Springfield. Had nothing to do with anything but family, so sometimes there is exceptions to the rules on why you move out. I work here, I've been with the city for just about 25 years, take great pride in it. I've had about five or six different jobs in the city of Springfield, which some people go, "Aren't you happy?" Yeah. But working those different jobs made me a better employee. I've got people from City Water, Light &amp; Power that say, "Bonnie, do you remember how you handled this?" I'll have people say, "How did you do this?" Now, I'm not very well-liked at times, because I'm pretty darn vocal. And I'm vocal for the brothers and the sisters. I'm not a union person, but for the guys here and the girls that work at the Public Works, because they'll give anything. I'm damn proud of the Fire Department. My husband's a retired fireman. So I've been around this city. The only thing I'm asking all of you guys to do, but first of all, I'm asking you, sir, Mayor, somebody told me, I am the only supervisor at the Public Works Garage that does not get 40 hours a week. I've been informed that somebody, something's been sitting on your desk to sign off, to give me that. Don't sign off. I'll stick with my 37 and a half hours. I'll continue working my lunch hours and coming in early, because I've got great pride in the city. But somebody up here needs to hold somebody's feet to the fire. Forensic audit is like a, oh, God, don't mention that. But hold somebody's feet to the fire. We didn't just all of a sudden wake up and go, "Wow, we're $11 million in the hole." We didn't do that. You guys didn't do it. Somebody did it. I don't care if it started 10 years ago, five years ago, or three years ago. Somebody did it. Somebody's not looking at the books, somebody's not signing off. And like you said, sir, I got a checkbook. I got my husband's checkbook and I got my checkbook. My names on both, okay? Pretty smart, huh? This one pays my bills. This one is for the beer that I buy in Springfield, sometimes a 12-pack on the way home through Chatham, but most of the time, my grocery shopping's done here, better selection. But do it, you guys. Hold somebody accountable for $11 million in debt. And what I do not understand is how one minute you're telling us 11 million, and the next minute go, "Oh, well, when we move this money here, or this money here," like you said, we shouldn't. Who's watching that person move that money? Who is being accountable? I don't want one person being accountable for the money that these citizens are forkin' out for services and everything. And I did not mean to leave the Police Department out, because I have a nephew that's a police officer, too. So making the decision not to make those cuts were 100%. And the only last thing I'll say, because I know my five minutes is close, is when I send out a mass email to Alderman to come and visit me at the Public Works Garage, show me the respect and the respect of the employees of that garage, to make sure your streets are clean, your limbs are picked up, your garbage is picked up, and everything else that you guys email and say, "Let's get it done tomorrow." Show me and these employees the respect by showing up when you get that invitation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Mike Lopez, Village of Jerome President and co-chairman of the Regional Leadership Council. And I know many of you on different levels of friendships and professionalism. I want to commend you for your work tonight and last six weeks. It's probably put a strain on your families, your loved ones not seeing of you. But we are, we are not only just a village, we're a community. We rely on the city of Springfield for many services, indirectly, indirectly. Police and fire, we have our own police department, but if there's a calamity, police department will answer, Sangamon County will answer, police department, Springfield will answer with ours if we have to be. We have a majority of individuals in our village that are residents over the age of 65. They appreciate when the fire comes and the fire department comes, put out that fire or ambulance needs. We rely on the city of Springfield for utility, as Ted Maccus with the water service. We had a number of water breaks the last few weeks. None of us would stand out on a roadway, watch ignorant drivers text and go around Walbash or Chatham Road, and work on a water main break when it's 30 below zero wind factor. But they do, and I commend those workers. But we have to work together. We know we have issues. I thank you also professionally and personally, since I'm involved with the Regional Leadership Council on the Economic Development Plan, that was one of our discussion points. It's a start. It's not perfect. I do go on record that we need more representation from the common people. We need no more diversity and minority representation at that table. But I thank you, but for the stronger part of Springfield to move on, there's been a lot of questions about, are you going to pass the budget? I have a number of businesses have contacted myself about coming to Jerome, because we have that Walbash-McArthur corridor along with Southern View that has Sixth Street. Leland Grove has no area for economic development, and you have Grandview. But there are people that want to move to other areas, but we have to work together. And I commend you all for your work. I get in some battles with Joe McMiniman at some other meetings, and we have our differences of opinion, but we get, we take care of them, we move on. But I thank you all for all your hard work, and we've got to move on and get out of here, because I think there's a land for Southeast Gav, and I'm trying to get some updates. But Mayor and all the councilman people, let us, thank you very much for all your help.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else?
Hey, where did Bonnie go? I just wanted to tell her thanks for being an exception.
Good evening, James Johnson, Springfield resident, live here, work here. And I just want to speak on, because I've sat in these last two meetings, listening to you guys, and go back and forth about this budget. And you were elected by your constituents to make the tough, hard decisions. And what I'm baffled about is, we elected you to make the tough decisions, and nobody, the mayor called y'all out last week and said, "Who wants to cut?" And for some reason, we afraid to cut. We afraid to let some people go. Why? Picture sales, I think there's one businessman sitting in his horseshoe. Picture yourself in a businessman, and make that your money, because, see, this money you talking about is like the city's money. So picture a hat on as a businessperson, and you are not making money. You going to keep all of your employees? You going, you going to suffer it out and keep working them, instead of laying some folks off until you get back on your feet? Because that's exactly what you guys are afraid to do. Now, Jim brought up a good point at the last meeting. Why in the heck would we hire firefighters and policemen, knowing we got an $11, $12 million deficit? At the end of last year, going into this year, knowing we was going to have this day come, and then put them in this position of, "Man, I don't really want to fire you. I don't really want to let you go, but we have to." And how did that get past this horseshoe? We elected you guys to do it. Somebody should have put the brakes on hiring at the end of last year, knowing we going into this deficit this year. And now we don't want to cut. And, but then, we want to cut these guys right here, these TDLs, who do all the work in this city? Cleaning our roads, picking up our lamps, because guess what? If they don't plow the roads, them fire trucks and police cars aren't going anywhere. If they don't pick up the lamps, guess what? Ain't nobody moving anywhere. So why are we even considering cutting them? It don't even make sense. And then he says something about, "Well, we need them," when we talking about the tree trimming company, and we paying them $6 million. We only need one person certified to cut around them lines, and the ground people can be labors. We don't have to be experienced. Them guys can pick them limbs up as soon as they hit the ground. Or better yet, you know, hire some local labor. But I don't understand why the decision is so hard. Now, you say we cut to the bone. Did we really cut to the bone? Because maybe I missed something. Maybe I didn't hear it, and it's been a long night, maybe, but did we freeze any salaries? Did we freeze any buying new vehicles? Because we bought a whole lot of new vehicles last year. Did we freeze any of that? Did we cut in any of the departments that don't, that we really don't need? We considered one of them, but we need that one. Thanks, it got passed. But I don't think we really cut to the bone. But then, we want to pass a tax and put it on all of our citizens back. Our low-income, our senior citizens, these taxes that y'all going to talk about passing, it's going to trickle down and affect everybody. Instead of affecting a few folks, we got to lay off for temporary till we get back on our feet. So instead of 10, 12, 20 people, we want to affect our whole city. Because you pass these taxes, it's going to affect our city. People are hurting on jobs. A lot of people don't even have jobs. Like some Aldermen said, we don't, our people on fixed incomes. And the gas tax, yeah, it's going to trickle down. And guess what? It's going to raise our rates. Because that's another thing we need. Because I remember some years CWLP was hitting us, and we was raising our rates every time we looked up. Man, people, our citizens are tired of being taxed and getting hit with raises that we don't deserve. Until you start cutting, because you know that old saying, you know, that little fat pig, that fat pig is steady getting fat at the city. And until we cut that fat pig, man, quit putting the pressure on the backs of the citizens. Because we need some, we need some Aldermen around this horseshoe who ain't afraid to make the tough decision and make some cuts.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council, if you'd come forward and state your name and address for us? We'd appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say thank you all for this long night. I know it's been a long and difficult time for everyone here. I want to first commend the horseshoe, as it were, on the difficult decision that you've already made tonight. I think it was a difficult decision for this body to raise the sales tax after already previously voting it down. That's something that we don't often see, and so I want to commend you for that. My name's Gene Mitchell. I represent three locals here in Springfield, as part of Ask Me, Council 31, represent 337, which is CWLP, represent 3417, which is Public Works, some of the folks you see behind us, and also in the crowd 3738, which is the clerical, technical, and professionals of the city of Springfield. I want to say that, more so than anything else, I want to ask a question. I want to ask, who do you support? Do you support military veterans? I myself am a Marine Corps veteran of the Iraq War. Oftentimes, I, you know, I talk to politicians, and they tell me they support veterans, right? They thank me for my service, they shake my hand, they slap me on the shoulder, and they say, "If you need anything, you let me know." So I'm here to ask tonight, do you support military veterans? That's an easy one, right? Mr. Proctor, you're my Alderman. Do you support military veterans?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Let me ask this, do you support working families? I am a proud husband of my wife, Liz Mitchell, and I'm a proud father to Donald Eugene Mitchell III. We often hear politicians say they support working families. So I'm here to ask tonight, do you support working families? Yep, Mr. Redpath, do you support working families? Great. If I'm also asked, do you support taxpayers? My family pays federal and in state income tax, pays local property tax and sales tax. We often hear politicians say they want to do what is best for taxpayers. So I'm here to ask, do you support taxpayers? Yep. Great. I'm also here tonight to proudly say that the public workers that I represent are also veterans of all military branches. They've come to Springfield to continue to serve our country and our community. They are called to work and serve our fellow citizens. They don't ask for much, they just ask to be paid a fair wage for fair work, Alderman McMiniman. They ask for your support tonight. I'm also here tonight to proudly say the public workers of Springfield are also members of working families. They serve this community so they can keep a roof over their family's heads and food in their children's stomachs. They ask for your support tonight. I'm also here tonight to proudly say that the public workers of Springfield are also taxpayers. That's right, the tax increase that you voted for, they will pay. They contribute to the same bills as any other member of this community does. They too are on a fixed income. They pay the income taxes, they pay the property taxes, and even the sales taxes that you just voted for. So they are also asking for your support tonight. So you might be asking yourself, how can you show your support? I'll tell you. You can show your support by being the leaders they believe you all can be. You can show your support by providing the city of Springfield with the necessary revenue to prevent potential layoffs and furloughs. If you fail to provide those revenues, and if layoffs and furloughs occur, then your actions will speak louder than your words. Your actions will say you do not support veterans, working families, or taxpayers. I again want to end on a positive note. Thank you for passing the sales tax increase. It was desperately needed. I think the mayor has put forth a positive proposal for the natural gas tax, and I hope you all will support it, because it'll show your support for veterans, working families, and taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others wish to address the council on this ordinance? Sir, motion to approve as amended, I think we've done that. So all those in favor of the motion as, oh, we have one added amendment?
Yes.
To balance it, I believe? Director McCarthy?
Where we are right now, we need to do a floor amendment that would change the use of fund balances of resource from the current 1.4 million to 2,570,000.
So moved.
What's that take the fund balance down to, Bill?
Been moved and seconded in discussion on the floor amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So agenda number 2018-051 as amended, with the floor amendment as well. All those in favor?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMiniman.
It's a final thought, that it's also our obligation and duty to protect our city for the future generations and all the future working families of the future. And we are in a downward spiral, and I agree with some of the speakers tonight that have stated that we haven't taken a long-term approach. We've just fixed a temporary problem for this fiscal year, and that's why I'm going to be a no vote on this budget.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes as amended. 10 voting yes, 1 voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2018-054, an ordinance accepting RP. HR 18-66, authorizing a two-year contract with PSI to continue to furnish, develop, and administer entry-level exams for the police and fire departments from February 21, 2018, through February 20, 2020, for an amount not to exceed $125,000 for the Office of Human Resources. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2018-054 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
It moved in second. Any discussion?
This is going to be in place, but we're not using it for... We're in hold.
Yep. I'll have Jim Cousin, Director of HR, comment on how this will work.
The point where we would begin to use any of this contract would be when we decided to implement another test. So we won't be making any obligations with PSI until the time comes. So it's probably until 25.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is number 2018-089, an ordinance authorizing a redevelopment agreement with Boyd's New Generation LLC for redevelopment assistance for the property located at 1831 South Grand Avenue East, utilizing Far East Side Tax Increment Finance Funds in amount not to exceed $100,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2018-089 on emergency passage. It moved in second. Any discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman McMenamin.
We're seeing this proposal for the very first time tonight. How is this $100,000 going to be spent? This is $100,000 to a merchant? Is that what we're doing?
That's correct. Bow will come up, but it's for improvements to Boyd's Restaurant on South Grand. And she could speak specifically to that.
Alderman, as you know, the Far East TIF expires on the 22nd, okay, of this month. We have applied for an extension. Senator Benar has introduced Senate Bill 2569 to extend this TIF. And currently, it's in revenue as of last, the 14th. And just in case you don't need to... Since this has all been going on, school board has voted to write a letter of support for the extension. That just happened this evening. So anyhow, the TIF expires the 22nd. And so what we just need to do is obligate the funds that are currently... This applies to this ordinance and the next one after it. Just go ahead and obligate the funds that are in there, you know, in case the TIF would not get extended for some reason. But we're pretty confident that it will.
If Abby could speak to the improvements, I think, of the Boyd's wish to make.
So we've been working with Tammy Callaway, who's the owner of Boyd's New Generation Restaurant. It's a family restaurant that's been in Springfield in operation for many years. Tammy's owned it for 16. If you've driven by there, you can see the building needs some cosmetic repair. We're going to be working on HVAC, exterior repair, windows, parking lot lighting, just those sorts of property improvements.
To make it easier for me to get in there on Fridays and eat.
Alderman Turner.
I also just want to interject that this is a restaurant that has been in that location for many, many years, which actually exceeds the life of the TIF. So they have been paying increment into this TIF since its inception. And this is the first time that they have asked for any... Anything from the TIF. So... And this is exactly what I believe that Far East Side TIF was meant to do, which was to continue to try to spur and enhance economic development on that South Grand corridor.
Alderman Thailand, did you have... Alderman Seenor?
Actually, it has more of a sentimental value as the owners can tell you that my father used to come in and have coffee and hold court. I have a brother that goes in there now and has coffee. So, you know, it's outside of what Alderman Turner has said. It's very needed because the parking lot is kind of old and crumbling, and they want to do some other improvements that would help enhance the business. So we appreciate you all doing this for them.
Yeah, Alderman McMenamin.
I still don't understand why, at the last minute, something like this is brought to us on emergency passage. If we knew the TIF was going to expire, we should have had a chance to review the spending and inquire into it and so forth. I just don't understand this way of doing business as a city council, to spend this kind of money without oversight. I think it's dangerous.
But there's oversight. I think if... Go ahead, Alderman Turner.
There was oversight. This request went through the appropriate channels. It went to the... It was vetted. It went through all of the checks and balances that the Office of Economic Development sets forth as it does all of its TIF projects. It went through the same process as every other TIF in this city has gone through. It went through Office of Economic Development. It went through the EDC, which it received a unanimous vote. And there is nothing different about this request than any other request that has come to this council. The only difference is that it's on... And I don't even... There have been other TIF requests that have been on emergency passage, so that's not even different either. But as the director stated, this is a unique situation for us because we are under a date, certain deadline to have these funds obligated. This is the mayor and corporation council, and myself have been working diligently with our local elected officials in the legislature to do what we needed to do to move it forward so that it could be extended. Unfortunately, we hit a snag at that level, which we have absolutely no control over. So we... The last thing that we want to have happen is to have this TIF expire and we not have the opportunity for the city to benefit from this increment. I would also say that this is a TIF that's kind of a unique situation. When it was developed, it was almost entirely residential. The boundaries are Dirksen Parkway to the east, 14th Street to the west, Cook Street to the north, and South Grand to the south. And again, it was entirely residential up until probably three years ago, when we were anticipating that a Snook store was going to relocate in the outlots next to JCPenney's. At that time was when we extended the TIF to include businesses such as the Pepsi-Cola Bottling Company, JCPenney's Shop &amp; Save, and those businesses that are to the east of Dirksen Parkway. So up until that point, this TIF was entirely residential. And almost all of the increment that went into it was from property taxes from the individuals that lived in that area. So there's nothing any different than the hundreds of other TIF requests that have come to this council.
Mr. Mayor, what's different about this is that it's on emergency passage. We've seen it for the first time. There's no scrutiny by this city council. We've generally had a policy where TIF funding is at one-third level of total spending. And this... I'm just reading it real quick for the first time. This allows spending at the 50% level of total spending. And I just... I'm sorry, I'll vote present on this because there's just not sufficient review by the city council.
I would say that there have been... And not to be argumentative, but I do have to correct you. There have been other...
Well, you got to see it earlier, but we haven't. So that's the difference.
Please don't interrupt me.
Well, I'm going to interrupt because you're...
Please don't interrupt me.
It's been through the EDC.
There have been other TIF requests that have come on emergency passage. And there have been other TIF requests that have been at 50% of the requested amount. I can cite you TIF requests from the downtown TIF. I can cite TIF requests from the Enos Park TIF. So all of a sudden, because it's the Far East TIF, there's an issue and there's a difference. There's nothing different about it. We've seen the same thing before. We've seen emergency passage. We've seen 50% and more from all of the other TIFs throughout the city.
You can say anything you want, but that's not the history that I remember at this city council.
But we'll just have to vote our conscience. And, you know, this is a difficult area that we want to revive. And the owners are here, so I'd welcome them to come up and would thank them for their commitment to that part of town. So if you'd like to come up and share with us your plans for improvement to the restaurant, we'd appreciate it. The bark's worse than the bite. If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Tammy Callaway, owner of Boyd's New Generation Restaurant. 16 years there. My aunt and uncle had it. 15 years before me in the same location. This is my first time doing this. Thank you, guys, for having me. And what do you want to know?
Well, if you just talk about your improvements that you plan for the business, we'd appreciate it.
Oh, yes. I'd like to see the business have a new facade. The parking lot is terrible. If any of you guys have been there... I know some of the guys on this side have. It's terrible. I can't do it alone. I need some help. Economic development, I thought that was what it was for. I actually didn't even know it was available until there was an ad in the paper that you were talking, that the money was available and there was no takers. I didn't see the ad. One of my customers did.
Great.
And they encouraged me to call, and so I did.
And how many employees do you have?
I have three plus myself.
Great.
So I'm an itty-bitty business, not a small business.
Fantastic food.
Thank you very much. Alderman Redpath.
I'd just like to say that Boyd's has been a mainstay in the city for as long as I can remember. And this is what TIF money is supposed to be used for, to help our business and maintain business in the city of Springfield. So I will give a yes vote on this, and I encourage the council to vote along with that.
Mayor, I call a question. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no, 1 voting present. Next item on the agenda is number 2018-090, an ordinance authorizing a redevelopment agreement with the Office of Public Works for infrastructure improvements, including sewer rehabilitation, street improvements, and demolition of vacant properties within the Far East TIF redevelopment project area, utilizing Far East Tax and Financing Funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed $2,300,000 for emergency passage.